I think we can turn to you here. I'm going to start up. Hi, council. I'm just going to call this meeting to order and I'm going to ask the clerk to call the roll call, please.
Thank you. Mayor Stewart in the chair, councillor Carr, councillor De Genova, councillor Frye, councillor Swanson, councillor Hardwick is not in the chamber, councillor Weeb not in the chamber, councillor Boyle, councillor Dominado not in the chamber, councillor Bly and councillor Kirby Young. The meeting has formed.
Thanks very much. First, we'd like to acknowledge we're on the unceded traditional territories of the Musqueam, Squamish and Tsleil-Altooth nations and thank them for having care of this land's immemorial or since time immemorial, but also want to bring to attention the fantastic memorandum of understanding we signed yesterday regarding the Skytrain all the way to UBC, which is historic and it shows how our partnership is working and I think we're all very grateful for that. I want to thank the staff, many who are here today and work so hard. It's nice to see it firsthand, but it's also good to tell folks how great our staff are and so I'll take an opportunity to do that. In terms of the meeting today, in terms of folks in the gallery, please refrain from addressing council members without permission or applauding or otherwise interrupting a council member or a speaker addressing council. Please also respect the direction of the chair so that we can create a respectful environment for the council, public and staff. Speakers have five minutes to make their comments and should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered and you should indicate whether you support or oppose the recommendations. Speakers may only speak once and should follow along on Twitter at Van City Clerk for updates on the progress of the meeting so they don't miss their turn and any comments on the agenda can be submitted in writing to publichearing@vancouver.ca. Those speaking on behalf of other persons or groups will have eight minutes to speak and only if those represented are also present and identified at the public hearing either in person or by a representative of the group and they must not be speakers themselves. Finally, if council does not conclude a public hearing today, we'll announce a plan a little later, what that, the next day we would continue with this hearing. A reminder that our role here is to be quasi judicial, which means council is only to consider the merits of the rezoning application. Council members may ask clarifying questions from speakers, including the applicant or technical advice from staff, but should save debate for after the close of speakers. After hearing from speakers, council may approve in principle the application at the public hearing, refuse the application or defer the application for further consideration. So, we're moving back to the 180 Foley Street application and where we are is, we concluded hearing from speakers on the 23rd of January and the speakers list is closed, as is the receipt of public comments on this application and now we'll hear closing comments. So, just wondering if the applicant has any closing comments? Great, okay, welcome. Thanks for coming today and we'll make sure you have a mic on there.
Thank you. Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Stewart and council. Thank you for inviting us back to speak at the public hearing last week and our closing comments today. It's good to see you again. My name is Bill Chandler and my colleague Angela Wright and I are here to represent Lululemon and our management team. We want to reiterate how incredibly excited and proud we are about the next chapter of our growth story, both globally and more importantly here in our hometown. As mentioned in the hearing last week, the company is performing extremely well and in order to achieve our growth plans, we need to expand. The new headquarters, global headquarters on Foley Street will allow us to invest further in Vancouver's economy as we retain and attract new and diverse talent while connecting with the local community. In keeping with Lululemon's sustainability objectives, to create positive change, to build a healthy or thriving future, the project will meet or exceed the city's green building policy for rezoning. This includes measures to achieve LEED certification, reuse captured rainwater on site and substantially reduce its energy use and greenhouse gas emissions. The team is also actively exploiting LEED Platinum, WELL and Net Zero Carbon certifications. We also want to take this opportunity to provide just a little more information about our purpose and values of the company. Lululemon's purpose has evolved since what's on the website, sorry that's a bit outdated there, but our purpose is to be the experiential brand that unites a community of people living the sweat life. Lululemon is an equal opportunity employer and in 2018, we made a pledge to achieve 100% pay equity between men and women as a global organization. We are committed to yearly assessments of our hiring and reward practices and making informed and inclusive decisions on our values. In fact, our senior management team is 60% female comprised of six women and four men and our board of directors is a 50-50 split. Now, I'd like to remind briefly the council about the journey we've taken since we bought the property at 1980 Foley Street in 2016. The property was purchased several years ago. We've been collaborating with our internal teams, architects, designers, city staff and all of you to move this forward. We're excited we're at this point today. Lululemon is the largest publicly traded retailer in British Columbia and we have been working in partnership with the city of Vancouver as we truly believe there's an economic benefit beyond the new headquarters being an impressive looking building or a handsome looking building, thank you very much, which indeed it is. The benefits include, but are not limited to, creating an additional 5,000 direct and indirect jobs during the construction of the building, a 15 million cash contribution to the city for public benefits, which includes 8 million for citywide development cost levies, 2.8 million for citywide utility DCLs, 1 million contribution for public art and an estimated 2.2 to 3 million for additional infrastructure and safety improvements, including extending the Falls Creek neighborhood energy utility to our site. In addition to this, there will be a minimum estimated annual tax contribution of $4.5 million and that's a minimum estimate. I'd now like to turn it over to Angela.
Good afternoon, mayor. Good afternoon, council. We heard you at the hearing last week and your request for us to consider onsite childcare. We want you to know that this community is extremely important to us and we are here to take a collaborative approach to find solutions for the future. Over the past week, we reconnected with our management team internally and have also been in conversation with city staff about a resolution that we hope will be agreeable. The information and dialogue last week was extremely informative and we talked as a management team about the deficit of childcare across the city. We are proud to call Vancouver home and intend to do so for many decades to come. We are committed to this community and helping to meet its childcare needs.
And just to close it out, want to be able to thank you for your time, for the dialogue last week, which was incredibly helpful and informative. With your yes vote today, we can break around in September and we're really excited about doing so. We love this community and our people. We look forward to being part of the fabric of this amazing city for decades to come. So, in closing, we respectfully ask for your support of our project and the public benefit. Our growth requires us to find the ideal location for us to continue to expand. We hope that Lululemon can and will remain in our hometown of Vancouver. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Does staff have any closing comments? And actually, so we can't ask applicants questions this time around, so thanks, that's off the hook for now. Now staff's on the hook.
Yes, thank you. Staff would like to make a few closing comments and remarks. We would first like to thank the applicant and everyone who came out Thursday to speak and who waited around and waited to speak. We listened intently and especially for questions from council. The first concern I'd like to address is regarding childcare. The applicant and staff have worked closely over the past week. The applicant has worked with staff in advance of today's meeting to explore what opportunities existed for Lululemon to support the city's daycare efforts. The applicant has prepared to provide a voluntary cash contribution in the amount of $3.5 million towards public childcare. Staff have a condition prepared should council wish to resolve via this mechanism. The second concern raised was regarding the treatment of the China Creek right-of-way. We understand that it is desire of council to provide a more naturalized treatment of China Creek and this design concept complements the design approach that the applicant would like to pursue. Staff has been working with the applicant's representatives and will continue to work with their team on the right-of-way treatment in advance of the development and permit application. In particular, this segment of China Creek historically resembled more of a marshland or mud flat than a creek with a tree bank. Commemorating and daylighting the creek would reflect this historic form and staff would support that design approach. We have a condition prepared should council wish to resolve via this mechanism as well. A third concern was raised regarding how public art would be selected for this application. We spoke to our public art team and Lululemon has chosen to pursue option A under the art program. They will deliver public art as an in-kind contribution. Public art process requires that the developer work with the public art consultant for the project. City public art staff will discuss with the consultant, developer and design team the potential locations and approaches of commissioning before the preliminary plan is presented to the public art committee. After receiving initial comments from the PAC, the consultant will draft a detailed public art plan defining the terms of reference for artists and the artist selection process. The public art plan must be reviewed and approved by the PAC before artist selection and concept development begins. As this is a significant project, public art staff will monitor the selection process and the commissioning process through to artwork installation and completion. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Okay, so we have a number of councillors on the queue for questions. Councillor De Genova, I have you.
I was, I had some questions. Some of them maybe have been answered with the new information. I'm prepared to move the motion with the amended language that staff had said that they had prepared. If there are other questions, I've.
There's a huge list of folks that are still there.
Maybe I just couldn't ask.
It is here, right with the floor to move motions.
Okay, thank you very much. I will ask one question of staff. I just wondered if the contribution would be for childcare in the area. Is there any provision for that specifically in this specific area? It's a bit of a new question, sorry, because new information, new question.
Thank you for the question. My name is Teresa O'Donnell. I'm the deputy director for current planning. We've written, we've worked very extensively with the ACCS staff. As you all know, there's a Broadway plan underway and they are working with ACCS to identify the demand for childcare in this area and how we will meet that demand on several different sites. So, as written, the condition that was prepared provides maximum flexibility to the ACCS staff to be able to locate, to apply those funds as they see necessary, however the intent is to, for those funds to land in this immediate area. Hope that answers your question.
Thank you very much. It certainly does.
Mr. Mayor, may I just jump in just on that real quick? First, I just want to acknowledge Teresa and the entire team for working, picking up on the questions during the public hearing and then working with the applicant team to land this. We, I did send around the language, council, of a potential condition, so you should have that in your inbox and I think the team really wanted to create flexibility. As you know, citing childcare is very, very difficult and so we wanted to give ourselves the flexibility to be able to combine these resources with other resources from other projects to be able to add one or more childcare in the, in the general metro core area. So, that's kind of how we're framing it and really feel like having the flexibility is important for us to be able to land this investment sooner rather than later.
Thank you very much. Councillor De Genova, anything else?
No.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry councillor Carr, I knocked you off by accident, but I will go right ahead.
Great, thank you. And first of all, Mr. Mayor, may I just declare for the record that I have viewed the videotape of the whole proceedings of this item, so I'm prepared to vote.
How proactive of you. Thank you.
You're welcome. My first question really was around childcare, having viewed the tapes. And my question really around that was whether, so I've got this new information, but my question was really around the 15 million in DCLs and whether or not any portion of that can be earmarked. Some of it I noticed is earmarked, but can any of that also go towards childcare?
A portion of the DCLs can be used for childcare, yes.
And is there any direction needed from council to make that happen or is it, where does the discretion lie in that?
I can jump up. Mr. Mayor, the DCLs are allocated on a formula that's approved by council and it's reviewed every few years and it allocates it, some to childcare, some to parks, some to affordable housing. There's no discretion and there's no need to allocate it at this point. The time for discretion really comes when council's setting the policy for how the DCLs are allocated and so it does go into a central pot. That's what I was saying earlier about how having flexibility here, will it enable us to match these funds with others and DCLs would be one source of that.
Okay, and DCLs included from this project?
Yeah, oh yeah, definitely, yeah.
All right.
Yep. I mean, DCLs come in during different phases of the project, as you know, so we may not get the DCLs from this project. We may want to make the investment sooner, right? So, we want the flexibility.
Got it. Okay, that's great. Another question had to do really with the, with the China Creek and, and so I'm, that's just another condition that's addressed that, but I just wanted to affirm there was a number of questions that arose during the public hearing around whether the outdoor child space could be on that land, but that, let's leave that aside for now, or actually maybe answer that. What is staff's opinion around the importance of the, of the land that is right now, could be an outdoor childcare space, but is now dedicated towards the green space for the pot, the potential of resurfacing China Creek, for example?
Yvonne He, social policy. I, there are a number of challenges with using what we call an away play space, which is divorced from the indoor childcare play space. One of them is, it provides a barrier to the access to outdoors for the operator and makes it much more difficult for the operator to take kids in and out as they need to, to meet childcare provincial licensing regulations. Staff have not yet ever supported a childcare that is a full-time group childcare that has an away play space. In addition, for the most part, the use of parkland is not, is not supported by park board staff because those spaces tend to be over capacity anyhow, even without the consistent use of a childcare.
Okay, okay. I wasn't thinking of an away space, but when there was still the idea that it might be onsite and using that outdoor space, but I, but you've answered my question around the outdoor space.
Okay.
Okay. A third question, Mr. Mayor, if you could, I don't have a timer on here. If you could just give me an indication.
You were at 3:40.
Thank you. Two other points. One was around whether or not, there was some question about the mountain views even from the upper slopes, the Fairview slopes. So, again, if you could just reaffirm where the mountain views, at what point the mountain views are affected. And my final question, you can think about this at the same time, has to do with some of the speakers who commented about a potential wall of buildings along Great Northern Way and I'd like to know whether that is even possible with the configuration of land parcels that are there now and the already developed spaces.
Pat Chan, urban design. So, about the mountain view, so what will happen, it's, if you were to build without any sort of amendment to the existing CD1, you could get 120 feet kind of building that will sort of block all, all the mountains. There was one of the slides that Leafka had shown last week that points to that, where they, she shows like a red dash line where under, no amendments were to be made, that would be the building. And so, what we've done here with the building, it's actually tapered and it's gone a bit top, it's gone taller, about 100 feet or so, but it's tapered in on the side and so it's sort of, you could get slivers of sort of the mountain views on the slide too. We don't deny that the mountain views will be blocked, but it was to minimize the impact to the mountain views.
Compared to what would be done under the currently allowable height?
That's right.
Okay.
That's the five.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Kirby Young, sorry about that.
Hi. Good afternoon. Question, good news, obviously, with the update on the information from the applicant, which I appreciate. A question that relates, and I'm reading the language on the conditions that staff have provided and I appreciate it's providing maximum flexibility for childcare, sort of it says within, I think the language is in with the metro core and adjacent areas. Realistically, given the amount of employees coming to that area, what kind of opportunities are there to practically locate childcare in proximity to this proposed new development?
Mark Pickersgill, I'm the lead childcare planner and social policy. To answer that question, it's, it's a bit of a tough one to answer right now. I can say that in terms of commitments already within the immediate area, we're not looking to, those are already commitments, so we'd be looking at an additional opportunity or additional opportunities to that. We have a couple of potential ideas or sites, but again, those are so far on the horizon that we, we can't really speak to those specifically yet.
Okay, so just in the interest, and I appreciate that, just in the interest of time, so for existing childcare projects that are envisioned in that area, you don't see the opportunity to make them larger, for example, you're envisioning more separate?
Well, that could be one, one approach that we take is looking at maybe some of the commitments, but making them larger or finding new opportunities.
Okay, so that is considered in terms of the option to put capacity specifically into that area?
Yeah.
Okay. And then a second question, and it relates to some of the, reading some of the correspondence that council received, and it's really, if you can just clarify again why this is being considered a text amendment, I realize there's an increase in FSR, but with a significant height increase from 100 and something feet to 215, why that falls as a text amendment is not considered a significant change?
Thank you for the question. Because we're only changing one portion of the existing bylaw, it's only considered a text amendment. Staff are supportive of the massing shift as it improved the streetscape along Great Northern Way and approved a number of other urban design aspects of the building. So, we felt that from a design perspective, it did qualify as a text amendment. Further to that, adding retail upgrade improved the building's interaction with Great Northern Way and staff, staff supported that amendment to the, to the project.
Okay, thanks. I appreciate the philosophy as well as sort of the, the policy piece around why it's a text amendment. And then my third last question is on the language for the additional consideration, replacement provided related to sort of China Creek and specifically emulate, and I think it quotes here, marshlands historically in the area. Can you expand and provide a bit more color on that? And also, that's not changing with that amended thing, the visibility, sort of the, you know, porous visibility and clear glass and other components were there in terms of view lines through to the site. This is more specifically around emulating the marshlands. Is that the crux of the change in language?
That's correct. In hearing the comments from last Thursday, staff wanted to clarify that the intent of this right-of-way is to commemorate China Creek in its historic form, which some creeks would resemble more of a banked creek with, with trees. In this particular instance, as this creek was at the outlet, it would have resembled more of a grassy marshland. So, the type of treatment we're seeking as we daylight the creek is, is more in context of a marshland. That being said, it's still a public right-of-way, so we still want to have it accessible to the public and a desirable public open space with a lot of daylight, as well as porosity to the interior of the building and the glass of the building. So, we're trying to achieve a number of different objectives all at the same time.
Okay, but the marshland treatment might appear to be more visually natural as opposed?
That's correct, yes.
Is that, is that a fair characterization?
That's entirely fair characterization, yes.
Okay, that's terrific. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Dominado.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to both the applicant and staff for the updates. I did want to just follow up on one of the speakers from last week. Tim Grant came speaking representing PCI Developments and in his comments, he mentioned that there is further childcare anticipated in, along this block and I think is part of when they're developed. So, I just wanted you to clarify that for council, because I sort of made note of that and wanted to follow up with three questions, just to understand the landscape.
That is correct. They own the site immediately to the east and that has been a site that's been designated through the Broadway Plan as a place to locate daycare.
Okay, thank you for that.
And he is aware of that obligation.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. That's all I had.
Thank you. Councillor Swanson.
Yes, how much of a daycare facility would $3.5 million build? How much does a daycare facility usually cost?
Based on our estimates, 3.5 million should, should provide for 25 spaces of childcare space.
Okay, thanks. The other question I had is, there's supposed to be a restaurant on the bottom floor of this building, right?
Yes.
Has any consideration been given to using that space for childcare?
That wasn't an approach that, that staff took with the applicant. Our intention was to have animated spaces at the ground level that interact with Great Northern Way with the bike path and with pedestrian path in that area. So, we hadn't pursued redesigning the building with them during, during the application phase. We had, we did support those active uses at grade as they animate the street and fall in line with the direction that we believe their Broadway Plan will take as it moves forwards.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Weeb.
Yeah, good information here about the China Creek and the daycare. The strategy right-of-ways, normally it talks about being 13.1, but discretion, we made it 16 meters. Has that continued with the work with TransLink on how the interface on the northern side would look like with the Skytrain?
Hi, Charles Joseph with Engineering. So, we've had some discussions with TransLink just early on about how there's aspiration to eventually daylight the creek, but until they figure out what the design is of the subway, of the subway project through that portion, we can't figure out how we would continue the daylighting through there. It may. It may end up being underground in a pipe portion through there. We may find ways to commemorate a water feature through there. We may even find a way to daylight it, but at this time, we can't confirm what it would look like through that portion, or if that would be the exact alignment of it.
The north portion, this section of the Skytrain, from what I've been told, it's been completed in design. Has it not been completed in design? To know that we could preserve that cottonwood tree and move it inwards towards the building or?
No, we've seen concepts of what the design build could look like, but I don't think we've actually confirmed what the final design in detail is for that section.
Okay. And the five-point meter corner cut, in a lot of the plans the city has online with the Falls Creek Flat Structural Plan that we decided, the Greenway was going to go on the northern side of the property, not on the southern. So I'm just wondering why we have easement cuts on the front and southwest corner and the amount on Foley as well, instead of on the northern side of the property?
So the corner cut is for the intersection improvements. There, the plan has always been for that Central Valley Greenway to go along Great Northern Way. We have had some discussions about a pathway along the northern edge of the property and how it interconnects across the railway, in line with what you're saying, but it was never intended to not have Central Valley Greenway go along the south property line.
Okay, because all the stuff that was projected and all the billboards actually show it go behind, right? With the pedestrian bridge dropping down. And so the ones, right, there's that realignment so that there wouldn't be the detour of Central Valley Greenway that you'd have to cross Clark and come back across, because it's quite a long detour. And so I thought the long-term plan was to eliminate that detour and put it on the north side. Is that not the long-term plan of the Central Valley Greenway?
No. Yeah. So we haven't precluded the option for the active connection, but there wasn't a plan to take it off of, of Great Northern Way.
Oh, okay. I have a few, okay. The diagrams I have show different versions. Second would be on the street and view cones that were in the bylaw, the CD1 bylaws for the region. It talks about preserving the street cones, kind of Carolina, Fraser, St. Catharines. So they've kind of have, each one of them had a protected view cone, or view, talks about protecting that corridor of, and allowing buildings up to 150 feet on the whole finning site. So I'm just wondering, did we look at what the view cone is at the street at the top of the hill beside China Creek and the rest of the streets to ensure that it kind of meets the guidelines that were protected in the former CD1 bylaw?
Be similar to the question earlier, your question itself. So it's like sort of pushing the buildings in on the either side to sort of minimize the impacts to the north?
Okay, but I mean, obviously in the old plan, they had street end view corridors. And I'm just wondering, is the building positioned to ensure that that street end corridor is being respected?
Those view, those view cones are, well, they're not council adopted view cones in a sense, but they're part of the guidelines as opposed to part of the official set of view cones.
Yeah, I just, it was in the CD1 bylaw for this area.
Yeah.
And so just looking at it, it was, I'm just wondering how it was kind of reflected in the design?
It's part of the, the exercise to sort of taper the building down on the sides.
And the extra statutory right-of-way on Foley, what is the intent of having a large increase on this side of the street when the other side's not developed? And there might be an opportunity to not do as much in a large statutory right-of-way on the western front, on Foley?
On Foley?
Yeah.
Just at five minutes.
SRW on Foley?
Are you referring to the existing SRW that's along the west side of Foley Street?
Yeah, I'm just wondering with the constraints.
We're actually well past the five, Counselor Weave.
I can just say what the purpose of that existing one is for.
Okay.
It's, it was added, it was added a few years ago for sidewalk space along the, sorry, east side of Foley Street.
Thanks very much. Counselor DeGenova.
Thanks very much, Mr. Mayor. I had indicated that I was ready to move the motion. I am happy to move the motion with the amended language, but.
Privileged to do so. There are other people on the list. Conventionists, we usually hear from them.
I'm not sure if they're all on the list for.
I guess we'll have to find out.
Questions? Okay, so if they're on the list for questions, I'll put myself down to afterwards. That's fine.
I'm not sure if people are or not, or why they're there, but you're okay to see
Counselor Swanson has indicated she's on for questions, so I will move myself down the list.
Okay. Counselor Boyle.
Thanks. I have a couple of questions also on the childcare piece. And one of them is, can you give us a sense of the timeline for potentially developing spaces that we could develop with this contribution, just in, particularly in terms of how it relates to something in kind that would break ground in September?
Again, in terms of timelines, it is tough to predict. We do look for opportunities in a number of ways. We look for opportunities to, to be able to work with development, to be able to do this, and that tends to be a little bit more of an unpredictable exercise. And then we're also, when it comes to locating childcare, look to integrate into civic projects on civic lands. And so there, there are potential opportunities that, that we have at least caught wind of or have an idea that could be coming down the pipe. In terms of exact, an exact timeline, it really depends. As I said, development tends to be a little bit more unpredictable, sometimes fast, sometimes slow. If it's on a civically controlled piece of land or a building, then we tend to have a little bit more control. And those timelines might be a little bit shorter, and I'm sorry for the vagueness of that, but it's generally a really difficult exercise to predict exactly when. And it also will depend on the type of construction as well. If we have a complicated development project, it could take quite a bit longer. If we have a dedicated standalone childcare, a spot to build that kind of thing, that could be quite a bit quicker, so.
Could I add to this, Mr. Mayor? I guess just directly to speak to your point, I don't think we're going to find a project that's going to be breaking ground in September that we would invest the dollars toward. So likely, it won't be at the same timeline as this project is moving forward, but as you know, we, we have an MOU with the province, and we just got 33 million from them. And, and we have our own money in the capital plan, so this being added to that would enable us to, to be able to push projects forward that we might not otherwise be able to push forward. As you know, like we have a real dearth of childcare up on Main, and there's some projects moving forward there. And so we would definitely be looking forward to allocate the funding as, very soon.
Okay. That gets to my second question, which is about if, if 3.0 million would cover about 25 spots, what other partner funding might we be able to leverage to make sure we're creating more spots than that?
That's a good question. So we, we talked a little bit about DCLs, the citywide DCLs are a potential source, as well as CACs in the immediate, or within proximity of the area. So likely through the Broadway Plan, that's another area, as well as the provincial MOU funding that we have as well. So there's a number of potential sources there, and I'm optimistic that we can definitely cobble something together, particularly for this area. It will be a matter of finding that opportunity in the sites, and we are motivated to be trying to find those as, as quickly and as thoroughly as we can.
Okay. And my final question on childcare is, have we, are we looking at possibilities of modular childcare to get spaces created more quickly?
So in terms of modular childcare, we, we have done some exercises to understand what are the opportunities to do that. I think at this point, we're not eliminating any possibilities or opportunities. There will be opportunities where it might make sense and others where it won't, because ultimately, it depends on cost, and we, we look from the city's perspective on maintaining a sound long-term investment in, in something like childcare. So if, if it does make financial sense and we have an opportunity to do it, then absolutely we would, because we do understand that it, it could be a quicker construction process.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Swanson. You have three minutes left or so?
Do we know how many workers are supposed to be working in this completed building?
Yes, the applicant's package states that they'll start with about 2,000 workers, given their current workforce, and eventually ramp up to approximately 4,000 workers at this site.
So do the daycare folks on staff have a figure that you use about how many daycare spots you need per 100 workers? I know I'm just figuring here for city council members, it would be about 27% of us need childcare. So 27% of 4,000 is like 1,000 daycare spaces would be needed just by those workers?
The number that we use is two, two childcare spaces for every 100 employees as a rule.
Just two? Two childcare spaces for every 100 employees?
Historically, our number has been one in every 100. Over the last five years, we've, we've modified our calculations.
Whoa, that seems really low. Why do you use that number?
The original formula was developed by a consultant, Gordon Cleveland, who's done a lot of work on, on childcare need and economics. He's worked with the city of San Francisco and just prior to doing Vancouver's calculator, and that was, it was based on some of the numbers from San Francisco.
So we need four spaces just for 11 people here? So, okay. What I'm getting at is, it seems to me that it would be nice if the proponent could build the childcare that its own workers would need, and that 3.5 million probably isn't enough to do that.
I'm going to jump in if I can. There will be a time for council to debate this. As staff, we have prepared the project. There are many, many things that we would like in the world that we don't get. In this case, it would have been great to get childcare in the building. This is an amazing project. We're very happy to get the 3.5 million that we can allocate toward childcare elsewhere, and that was the applicant stepping up above, way above and beyond what, what was demanded of them, and it was in response to council's requests and the concerns that you were raising. And so at this point, staff are recommending proceeding with this. This enables us to do a childcare project in the neighborhood that we might not have been able to do otherwise. Thank you.
Anything else, Counselor Swanson? Hey, thanks. Counselor DeGenova?
Thanks very much. I'd like to move the motion with some amended language, adding the option in of childcare. I'm not quite sure if the note to the applicant was to be added in to the language specifically, and I'm seeing the city manager nodding his head yes. So then I'd like to add in the recommendation with the note to the applicant on the childcare piece that I had sent in. And I'm happy to speak to that, but willing to wait for that to be up on screen if you prefer, Mr. Mayor.
Do we do need a seconder though before, great, we have Counselor Bly as seconded, so we have, I'm going to clear this queue then. And now move to the main queue.
Thanks very much. First of all, I, I want to, I want to acknowledge and appreciate all of the speakers who came out to speak. I know that this council has made childcare a priority, but we've also made growing our economy and supporting local business. And although there's local small business, there's all sorts of different types of local business. I understand, and I did say it before, I'll say it again, I, although I wasn't here physically for all of the proceedings of the public hearing, I did watch everything, and on my way here the other night did that as well. And, and it shines through that certainly this is going to be something different. I heard the words handsome, I heard the words severe, but I think it's going to be different, and I think that that's exciting. I'm very happy, I have to say, I was, I was a bit concerned about the childcare component, considering the need for it, and I agree with some of, you know, maybe the questions and comments that were being asked about two childcare spaces per 100 people, but that's a policy question. That's not specifically about this public hearing, and I think that there's been a very generous contribution made. So I'm trying to take that contribution, and although it's included in the recommendations, so it's there, and I thank staff for that language, I'm trying to think about this without that amount, although I think that it will be well-used for childcare. I did add the words because it could be taken out of context, out of the application in the city of Vancouver to it. I understood from the city manager that was fine. I do, I do think that it's important that we do remember that people in our city will need childcare, and I think that perhaps people working in, in this space, if it does indeed get approved, will also need childcare. So I appreciate the spirit of this, and I certainly think that it's, it's a monetary amount of money that we didn't have before we got to this conversation, and I think that there's matching funds that go along with that from the province, and I appreciate the work that Mayor Stewart has done in, in meeting with provincial officials to make sure we secure that money. This council has made childcare a priority. Aside from that, we also need to make sure that we're growing our economy here in Vancouver and not pushing people out. And I say that about the missing middle, but I also say that about homegrown local businesses that outgrow our city, and it's sad to see that. So I really do appreciate this, and I hope that the applicant team, that you'll understand that I'm trying to look at it in, in two different ways as we just got this information. Here at public hearing that you'd be making this contribution, I was quite pleased with the project before, was a little concerned about the childcare, but this has alleviated those concerns. So I'm glad to move the motion with that piece. I haven't added the second option because I'm not sure that it's necessary. I understand that staff are already working to make sure that this, this area, and I understand that there is provisions over the development permit, you know, process that will work towards perhaps some input around China Creek. So I didn't feel I needed to get that prescriptive. I'm not saying I won't support it. If it is put forward, I'm just saying I didn't feel that I needed to support it at this time. So with that being said, I will be supporting this application.
Thank you. Counselor Kirby Young. Sorry, we've got, yeah, that's moved with, sorry, we moved it with the?
With the amended language, yes.
Okay, great. So we're on to Counselor Kirby Young?
Yeah, can I just ask a point of clarification? So I was going to make closing comments, but have we, we've not added the additional recommended staff condition about China Creek yet?
Right now, it's the conditions that are set out in the proposal as well as the top.
Okay, then I'd like to, before making closing comments, I'd like to add to the additional recommended condition that staff provided with the language for China Creek
Okay.
At this time.
Sure. Did you want to address that at all, or do you want to?
Yeah, I'll, I'll address that because I think, and you know, particularly coming from the lens of a former park commissioner, and I think pursuant to this applicant's commitment, and they spoke often about a healthy workplace and the fact that the company is, its DNA is embedded in the city of Vancouver, and our natural surroundings are a huge part of that. And I think that as we continue to grow and densify in the city, we need to maintain and keep our natural spaces, and that includes sort of integrity about what they previously were. So I do think that this is an improved condition from staff, following the discussion of this process has unfolded, and I'm very happy to support it because we need to maintain and access to and sort of restore our natural spaces.
Thank you. Need a seconder for that? Counselor Fry? It's just an amendment, because the motion was moved with, with amended language. It's an amendment, it's been seconded, so if anybody wants to speak to this, adding China Creek, then please go ahead. Just put yourself on the list. Nobody wants to speak to this? Okay, so I'll call a vote on the, I'll call a vote on the amended, adding the amendment to the report. Counselor Dominado, Weave, and Swanson. Thank you. That's passed with none opposed. You have to have the floor to do that. And we're on the main queue. Counselor Kirby Young, you still have the floor.
Thank you. I'll take this opportunity to provide closing comments, and I, I really do appreciate the dialogue that has unfolded around this project, because I think it does illuminate the vast need for childcare spaces in our city, and we hear that we're short up to 16,000 spaces and how critically important. how critically important that is. But I also think that we really need to balance those objectives with our economic goals and moving forward in that piece. And this is a really important economic project. It's slated, if it comes on stream, to double the employment that Lululemon provides in the city. This is a homegrown Vancouver company, it may have different ownership now, and has evolved and has a global footprint, but it was born and bred here in Vancouver. And I think those are the companies that we want to keep here, and certainly they have shown a lot of innovation in their particular sector in, and sort of carving out a niche and really setting a trend there. And they do employ a lot of folks in terms of local designers and local employees here, and I think that's really important to recognize the economic impact that it will have, and that we are welcoming to enabling the companies that have kind of started, had their genesis here and then grown up here to stay and to remain here and keep those economic benefits in the city of Vancouver. So I'm really appreciative of that. I am comfortable that staff have considered the additional impact of height, and I really do like the fact that there's emphasis put on the public realm, so that we don't just have employment areas here in the flats where they're sort of barren areas that people go to, and I think of all the industrial parks that people used to build, but they're actually engaging in interactive spaces that people want to spend time in and sort of add that humanity and that human connection of the public realm. So I think that's a really positive aspect of the project. I really do appreciate the dialogue around childcare and the members of the public came to speak to it, and I appreciate the applicant's responsiveness to hearing that feedback. I think it's always kind of a first goal to, if you can locate that childcare in conjunction with large-scale developments when we have them, it's not always possible, but this is a significant additional contribution of $3.5 million, and 25 additional childcare spaces is much needed. It's very similar to our goal to continue to bring on new housing units of the right type. So I think that's important, and what I will say here in terms of, you know, a lot of commentary around healthy workplaces and sort of the sustainability aspect, is that social sustainability is really important, and I think there's a lot of opportunities for companies to stand up and demonstrate that corporate social responsibility and to lead when it comes with a social conscience. So I realize that, you know, this may have been what I describe as positive friction in a conversation when it happens, and there's different points of view, but I think we've got to a good outcome, and I appreciate the leadership that Lululemon is showing here in response to perhaps some, what might have felt like a bit of pressure, but very well, I think motivated pressure from the community and from council. And as an 80% female council, which is historic in the city of Vancouver, this is one of those opportunities, or I think responsibilities, that council has to set a direction around how we grow economically so that we can ensure equity in participation in the workforce, we can ensure growth of our GDP because women can go back to work, and that we have an opportunity to lead on issues and marry economic and social considerations alongside. So I think that's a really good outcome from this council, and I look forward to sort of the impact that that will have on future projects as council sends those strong signals that this is really important to us, that we built that kind of city. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hardwick, up to five minutes.
Yes, it was a point of information, and my point of information was that I did run out of time in reviewing the rest of the proceedings previously, so that's why I just abstained on the last vote and why I will be abstaining. Thank you.
Okay, that's fine, thank you very much. I guess that's a privileged point, actually, and you could raise that at any time. That's okay. Councillor Carr?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I just want to thank the speakers for coming out and being so diligent in pushing council on issues that are incredibly important, like childcare. And I just want to thank my fellow councillors. For some, I sort of lay there because I was so sick, but I got to watch and hear your very clear and well-thought-out questions around childcare. So I really appreciate the push, really, that council had, and that has obviously resulted in success. And I do want to thank the applicant specifically for the voluntary offer of the 3.5 million for childcare. That's very welcome and generous, and very much appreciated. I just want to note for and remind everybody, this is a text amendment, so there is no increase in density, no CACs. Sometimes people think, well, it's big, it's a, you know, building, but this is not the case, this is just a text amendment. However, we can use the DCLs, which I verified with staff, of some portion. It's not that we assign it, but staff will assign, and the city manager assured us that some of that money will go to childcare as well. I also want to remember, one of the speakers who noted that there are going to be other childcare centers in the area. The PCI talked about their site at Thornton and Great Northern Way having childcare, and a site next to Emily Carr having childcare. And finally, I want to thank staff for the work on this and the incredibly diligent work the last week to respond to issues raised by council, working with the applicant, and that is, and coming forward with, I think, two very thoughtful potential amendments, which have now been incorporated into the motion, which reflect the concerns of council. And finally, I just want to talk about that second inclusion, which is China Creek, and really, talk about how important it is. I mean, we are a city that is known as a green city, and I think the work, particularly that councillor Weave has done over a number of years now around resurfacing our streams and working very hard to create the kind of greenways and blueways that I think will make Vancouver even more of a desired destination for people, both to live, to invest, and to come and play. And finally, you know, the building itself is really quite stunning, so thank you regarding that. I mean, it really is, I think, going to be one of those landmark buildings that people also kind of stop and go, wow. So notwithstanding the fact that it is, I think, really wonderful that a company, that's a homegrown company that has become a global company, has retained its commitment to locate its global headquarters here in this city. So I'm voting, obviously, in support.
Thank you, councillor Carr. Before we go on, I did make a little glitch here as chair, is that before we voted on anything, I should have asked councillors if everyone had reviewed the, anything that they had missed in the previous, because we had some folks ducking it out. So Adrian Carr, sorry, councillor Carr was, did indicate that she had reviewed it and would be voting, but I'm sorry, I didn't ask any other councillors. Right, councillor De Genova, anybody else? Councillor Hardwick, you've indicated that you hadn't reviewed yet. That's okay.
I had enough time, but I ran out.
No, that's fine, there's no, everybody has that happen to them, but because of that, you actually probably should, I should have asked before, and you should have abstained from, not abstained in a physical vote, but actually not voted on it. So what we're going to do is just, because of my error, we'll just strike that from the record, your abstention, which is counted as a positive vote when you officially vote. Right, and so again, apologies to council, so that does mean the last vote was unanimous, and that's, I think, worth noting, and again, just my error, I apologize for that. So we're on to councillor Bly, up to five minutes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Bear with me, I have a cold, but I'll keep this brief. So yeah, I too would like to start by thanking the speakers for coming and advocating loud and clear for families and for childcare in our city and in our region. You know, as a city, we've committed to childcare as part of making this city livable for families and growing our economy, and what that takes is, at times, really sort of following up with what we say and doing, and that is what I think has happened here. And I, so I want to acknowledge staff for that work, and amongst everything else about this project, which I do agree will be a landmark headquarters, and quite excited about the building itself, so, but to acknowledge staff for that work. And it is important that we do whatever is necessary to enable delivery more childcare spaces, to fill that 16,000 space deficit, no matter what, and that conversation has to be in this chamber's every single chance we get. And so, and I think we've done that. I think those considering putting down corporate roots here will also be asked to step up and make sure that they plan for and help contribute to the deficit of childcare spaces, and I think that's a great thing. We know Shopify has just announced coming to Vancouver, and they're going to say, okay, while we do this, we need to be planning for childcare. And so, not unlike history, Lululemon, you show up as leaders in the community, and I think you've done so here, too, so I think that's great. And really, what we cannot forget is this is about equity and women in the workplace, and I know all parents are responsible for childcare, but it does fall on women most of the time. And as a woman that worked full-time while having young children, childcare was top of mind all of the time. And there are some really amazing companies that are building childcare spaces into their operations, Patagonia being one of them, and I think it's worth taking a look to see what they're doing, because there is something about health and wellness as parents, that they can be close in proximity to their children when, especially in those first 12 to 36 months, when women are coming back to work. And so that's a bigger part of that family system that I think, I just wanted to take this opportunity to highlight, and there are, there's, this is a good start, and there's a long way to go. And I'm also proud to be part of this council, a council who did not shy away from this ask, and I think that's fantastic, and it was right across the board, and that's what we're here to do, and that's what I believe we've been elected to do. But I do want to thank Lululemon for making the correct choice here and meeting us. Would I prefer that the applicant build the childcare? Yes, let me go on record, I think that would have been 100%, and at the same time, I'm comfortable, I'm not as comfortable with government sort of mandating in the operations of a private business. I think that gets into precarious territory. So therefore, I do feel satisfied that this compromise around the childcare and acknowledge Lululemon for the additional three and a half million dollars contribution to build that childcare. So I look forward to the impact of this new project in our city. I think economically, we want to make that pie bigger, and this is a big step forward in that. And I hope that you run campaigns about people using that transit and doing what they can to integrate and be part of this community that I know is very excited to accept. Lululemon is their, is their new neighbor, so I'll be voting in support of this project.
Thank you. Councillor Swanson, up to five minutes.
Yeah. I think we should ask for more childcare. I think Lululemon could afford it. I think even with the city's ratio of two spots per 100 workers, they should be providing at least 40 spaces for the beginning workforce, 80 if it goes up to 4,000. But I don't think that would pass, and I don't want to prolong the agony. So, yeah, three and a half million is better than nothing, and I think it would be good if we had a principle that any new workplace had to provide childcare for all its workers. I think that'd be great. Maybe we can work on something like that in the future.
Thank you. Councillor Dominado?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of reflections. Thank you to the applicant and to staff. It's clear to me from the work that's gone into this, there's been already some responsiveness in having to adapt to the rights of way, the China Creek, the transits going in there. But in follow-up to last week, all of our questions, and I reflect back looking at the briefing package, and I wonder if you came in thinking, oh, it's a text amendment, this should be fairly straightforward, and in fact, you got quite a lot of questions from council around the childcare piece. And so I appreciate that there was some discussion afterwards and collaboration with our staff. And I will say, it was, it's extremely generous, the additional contribution of 3.5 million dollars towards childcare at another site, that really can't be overlooked, that is substantive, and will go a long way in us being able to expedite childcare in the city, so thank you for that. With respect to, and my colleagues have touched on this, sort of the multitude of benefits, there's certainly economic benefits and livability benefits of Lululemon headquartering in Vancouver, continuing in Vancouver, the upwards of 4,000 jobs that you talked about. And I really appreciated the reference to the sort of the equal opportunity employer and the pay equity you've worked on, but fundamentally, we want to have a strong local economy, and having locally grown businesses be here and grow here and thrive is critical, and it allows people to stay in the city and work in the city and hopefully live in the city. As well, there's the social benefit that was touched on by councillor Kirby Young, and that there's some real benefits to that in terms of the contribution towards childcare, but also to that area, and then the environmental benefits that we're seeing around some of the adaptation around China Creek and accommodating that. But I also want to say that I appreciated the, with the building, councillor Carr talked about how wonderful and fantastic the building is, and you talked about sort of lead platinum, but also the public space plaza that's contemplated there, and that's why I was asking about activation last week, because there's already a lot of foot traffic and cyclists and others using that space, and it's only going to grow, and it's very exciting to see, and that we're going to be able to activate that space in a way that's publicly accessible for all, so I think that's wonderful. And I didn't get a chance to ask about this, but you addressed it in your comments, was the, being able to break ground starting in September, and again, that's also exciting, and so we obviously want to see this go forward as quickly as possible. So happy to support the text amendments that are here today, and thank you to all the extra work that went into sort of pulling this together for this afternoon.
Thank you. Councillor Weep?
Yeah, I'm excited about the changes that have come forth. I think the components to China Creek is an amazing opportunity to really be initiator to what could be a long-term legacy project for the city of returning China Creek back to the area and the history, and reconnecting the city back to land and waters, which is such an important component, being a city of reconciliation. And I think that this project could really lead that for others to kind of join forces, similar to what MEC did when they were on the North Shore, of how, when they built, they helped restore a creek that ended up growing and growing as time went on and other developments happened. So I think this could be a catalyst project in that sense. I do like that 2.7 still talks about achieving public access and daylighting of China Creek. I think it's still in there, so not only are we talking about changes to, we just made today the amendment, but it still talks about daylighting, how this could really be something that's really unique, and we're just showing some pictures that show all Falls Creek flats and all buildings basically floating in water in one of the designs, and how stunning it could look. For me, I still think when we look at the original bylaws, there are things I wish were more incorporated. It talks about skywalks and other things to allow views to go through, it talks about different corridors. So I'm hoping that we can still look at some of the design features and try to look at what was kind of the original design of the community and what people were asking for in the preliminary bylaw creation, and hope that more of those get integrated, including the green buffer along Great Northern Way that had that tree canopy, and we've lost significant amounts of it already with some of the projects. And so I think, I mean, it looked like a Lorax forest at one point, and it was really critical, the fir forest that was there. There's a lot of bird nests on the property currently, and I think that there's an opportunity to really make this building really kind of fit with the land and waters and what it incorporates. For myself, to be brutally honest, it's the first time my house has ever been on architectural model, I have a direct view of this property, and so it's going to be a significant change. I will see this every day of my life, and so I do hope that it becomes the building that we, as long as I live there, as long, I hope it becomes a building as beautiful as we can make it, because obviously it's something there. And someone that was working for Lululemon when we were at 13 people headquarters, it's really interesting to see where the company has grown, and obviously staying with the home roots is really great to hear. So I will be supportive of the project. I do think there's some work that we can really do, because this could be such a leading project to be the healthiest headquarters, and I hope you continue to push. And today was a good, strong push, but I think you still have a long ways to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Fry?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. And, yeah, I don't want to say too much and echo a lot of what my fellow councillors did say earlier. I do want to really, really thank staff and the applicant for working together and hearing what we had come back with from the first iteration, and I really appreciate the work that you guys did to really bring this home and reflect the direction of staff and some of the concerns that we'd expressed. You know, I think getting lost in that, we really under-talked about the, we could have talked more about the fantastic design, some of the innovations that are going to be happening in this facility, you know, including the sort of innovation kind of lab stuff, and I mean, these are some pretty exciting things for tech and the future of industrial land use in our city, and this is the future of industrial land use, and I think this reflects it. And I think it really is a fantastic-looking building, and I think this will be something that will become an archetypal fixture of this new part of town as it evolves, and I look forward to seeing what people come up with for the inevitable nickname for this building. I've got my own thoughts, but I'll probably share those later. But, yeah, you know, exciting times. So, and again, really thank you to staff and the applicants for working so diligently to bring this home. So thank you, I'll be voting in support.
Thank you. Councillor De Genova?
I just thought I'd close on the motion. Just briefly, wanted to make sure that we end
Just briefly, wanted to make sure that we ended on a positive note, because I understand that it's, it's not easy as an applicant, because we see this project, it's something that we certainly see the referrals, the policy reports, read them, but realize that it's been a lot of work for you. And also, I want to thank and acknowledge our staff. I know that this has been a lot of work for you as well. And coming together, I really want to emphasize that I don't see this as I am just casting my vote in favor because of this additional contribution. I appreciate that that was made, but I don't want to send a message that, you know, there's a way to pay and things will move forward. I think that it's incredibly generous, because it goes directly to a need that not only this council has set as a priority, but that you yourselves have spoken as a company, and Lululemon has said they're committed to a healthy environment to making sure that families are connected. So I just really wanted to say that I appreciate that. I see it as being very in line with our goals as a city, as well as provincially, in moving forward to make sure that families can afford to live in Vancouver. And I think that that's what it comes down to. And I think that this also, you know, be it inside the building and the innovations that have been talked about, or outside the building and looking at the architecture, or the public art that will be decided in the future, that there are benefits right now that are immeasurable. So I look forward to seeing them as they come to fruition, and just really want to thank everyone, including the speakers who came up.
Thank you very much. Before I call the vote, just say a few things. Just looking at the model here, and I remember in the mid-'90s, early-'90s, when I was too broke to take transit, I had this really crappy red 10-speed that I would ride down that street pretty well every day. And there wasn't a lot there. And now, I think about what's going on Great Northern Way. We have a global headquarters, to match any global headquarters, with a company that is locally grown and is producing world-leading, in-high-demand products that, you know, innovation is a constant of the company. I think about the public art and the space for people, the Skytrain, I mean, just the transformation this is going to bring to not just this part of the city, but the entire city is, gives you goosebumps. And also, the dialogue we had here. We had a, you know, we had a negotiation, and what's the tough thing is that we do it all in public, you know? And so I think, congratulations to the counselors for being, you know, moderate in tone, but firm in demand, for the public, for driving, you know, for really driving this as well, this extra consideration. And of course, to the applicants for seeing that this council has a different priority, perhaps, a very intrinsic value, which is provision of childcare in the city, and really moving to match that. So I think in the end, it's something we can, I think, all be, all be proud of. And I think that, so I don't ride a crappy 10-speed down that street anymore, but when I go and visit the new building, when it's built and I hear shovels in the ground in September, that is really exciting. So just wanted to thank everybody, staff, just of course, always doing your diligent work and, you know, pushing us all, but then meeting, you know, our demands. Just wanted to thank everybody for everything they've done. And with that, I will call the vote on this project. Great, and that has passed unanimously. Thank you, counsel. I don't know if I like that Noel Plaiz role, but anyway. Okay, great. Thanks, counsel. We're moving on to the rezoning of 898 Broadway. Well, I'll give folks just a chance to clean the chamber before, or to clear out of the chamber before we move to read the application.
Hey, you guys ready? We'll go with this one. Hi, counsel. If I can call us back to order now, we're looking at item number seven on the agenda, CD1 rezoning of 898 West Broadway. And the clerk will read the application and summary of correspondence.
This is an application by Arnold Matus Architecture to rezone 878 to 898 West Broadway from C3A Commercial District to CD1 Comprehensive Development District. To permit the development of two mid-rise commercial towers at 11 stories and 13 stories with hotel use and commercial retail use at grade. A maximum building height of 42.3 meters and a floor space ratio of 8.96 are proposed. The general manager of planning, urban design, and sustainability recommends approval subject to conditions set out in the summary and recommendations of the public hearing agenda. The following correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speakers list and receipt of public comments. 10 pieces of correspondence in support, three pieces of correspondence in opposition, and this represents all correspondence received up to 2:30 p.m. today.
Thank you very much. We have Thien Phan here from the rezoning center to go over the, to present the application. And we have some folks on the list to speak, so at your leisure, whatever you want. Yep.
Great. Good afternoon, mayor and council. My name is Thien Phan. I'm the rezoning planner for this application. We have a full presentation available and happy to present that. We're also offering council the option of moving to a more condensed version that really only contains answers to questions from council at the time of referral.
Does anybody want the full presentation? Okay. Yep, just, we have, one counselor wants the full presentation, then we should move ahead with the full presentation, so that, please move ahead.
Great. Thank you. Sorry about that. Great. This current application is located on the southeast corner of Broadway and Laurel Street in the Fairview local area. It's currently zoned C3A, which is primarily the zoning along this stretch of Broadway. C3A contains commercial uses primarily, with some buildings reaching up to 18 stories. The area is very rich in amenities, including the Broadway City Hall Skytrain station, along with two future Skytrain stations planned at Laurel and one further west at Granville Street. Directly south of the site is the health campus for the Vancouver General Hospital, and its numerous functions, including research centers and medical offices. This is a view looking south from Broadway. What currently exists are a number of businesses, including a wine and beer store, the Fairview Pub with parking above, and a hotel built in 1971. The site is currently 40,000 square feet, for a frontage of approximately 325 feet along Broadway and 125 feet along Laurel. There is a notable grade change sloping up as you head south. To the rear of the property are a number of medical buildings, with the exception of one four-story residential building. This application is coming in under the MetroCore Jobs and Economy Land Use Plan, as well as the interim hotel development policy. Both identified the deficiency and the need for job space, including office and commercial, as well as it established a policy objective of no new net loss of hotel spaces. The area in blue was referred to, is referred to as the second downtown or the Broadway Uptown Office District, suitable for increased height and density to support the local economy. Since 2008, we also know that visitors to Vancouver have grown year after year, creating an even greater need to ensure sufficient opportunities for guests and the economy. This rezoning also came in prior to the launch of the 2018 Broadway Plan, in which council allowed in-stream rezonings to proceed, of which this is one. This proposal is for two towers and a podium containing hotel, commercial, retail, and convention space. This proposal adds 364,000 square feet of new commercial floor area, in which the east tower contains 165 long-term hotel units, and the west tower contains 272 short-term hotel units, for a total of 437 new hotel units. The floor space ratio is approximately 8.96, with a small portion of that located as below Regarding use, given the site's proximity to the hospital, long-term stay rooms in this location is very ideal for visitors to be close to health services. Also, guests may be drawn to longer-term options here, given the adjacencies to shops, services, public transportation, all of which connect guests to the rest of the city. All 165 of the long-term stay units are required to have kitchenettes within their individual suites. The proposal also offers indoor and outdoor common amenities. These two towers contain their own accessible green roof, plus an outdoor courtyard with green space. There's a new plaza proposed at Laurel and Broadway, which provides cafe seating and landscaping, as well as a public bike-share station. Indoor amenities include a wellness spa and a gym. All of these amenities are available for both short and long-term guests. The applicant is also proposing two levels of commercial retail units, including space for a restaurant and a pub. The wine and beer store, Avis Car Rental, and the Foot Reflexology business are all expected to return. The Fairview Pub currently operates on the ground floor. The owner of the current site is also the owner of the pub. Their future plans are to either continue operations of the pub, or have a third party operate this space. Nonetheless, the 45,000 square feet of commercial space can absolutely accommodate a pub and a restaurant here. The applicant has also located some convention spaces below-grade FSR, as is typical of many hotels. This is a view from the hospital looking north. The building heights and widths had been shaped in response to the helicopter flight path and the view cones that intersect this site. The west tower respects the helicopter flight path, which generally follows Laurel Street, limiting its height to just under, or just over 113 feet. The east building is limited to the underside of the Queen Elizabeth view cone at just under 139 feet. The proposal is exceeding the minimum car parking requirements, but still well below the maximum shown here. The surplus parking is to accommodate hotel and conference guests, as well as the fleet of vehicles. of vehicles for when Avis Car Rental does return to the site. Further, staff have heard that parking here is to minimize the hospital's overflow of parking. We know that some 50% of the parking spaces on the current site are being used by guests to the hospital, VGH. The hospital also has 600 staff members on their waitlist for a parking pass. There's an opportunity here to continue partnering with VGH. Public comments of support included the desire for hotels by the hospital and the support for additional height and density. Comments of concerns were fears around losing the Fairview Pub, as well as that the increase in the number of hotel units were far too great. There are over $10.6 million worth of public benefits being delivered from this site, including a fixed-rate community amenity contribution, a development cost levy, and a public art contribution. In conclusion, staff do support the provision of 437 new hotel units to replace the existing 117 expanded ground-floor commercial retail, meeting and convention space, all of which support the local economy. Pending conditions of approval in Appendix B. That concludes the staff portion of the presentation, and the team, the staff team and the applicant are available for questions. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Is the applicant here? Would you like to say anything, or wait for questions, or it's, whatever you, whatever you prefer?
We'll waive the presentation and wait for questions, but it's an honor to be here. It's Arnold Mattis Architect, and I'm here with my team, Chris Phillips, Landscape Architect, and Daniel Fang Bundt, Engineering from, our traffic consultant.
Okay, great. Thanks very much. Now, council, of course, you can ask questions to the staff and the applicant in this section, this part, portion of the, of the hearing. But in the second part, you can only ask questions to staff, so if you have questions to the applicant, I suggest you ask them now. Counselor DeGenova, up to five minutes.
I actually had a question of the applicant to start with.
It's the right time to do it.
Because I can ask staff later. My question to the applicant is, considering the controversy surrounding short-term rental, would this short-term rental be, and what I mean by that is, we have a license program here at the City of Vancouver now to address that and to address the housing crisis, would this short-term rental be licensed? And run by an operator?
Long-term stay, so, so the concept of the hotel is a co-branded hotel? It'll be run by a single operator, but it has two components to it? So we, will be run as a commercial operation, not, not a short-term rental?
Well, it said there were short-term rentals available, and then there were some that were operating separately as more long-term stay?
Correct, yes.
So I just wanted to make sure, when we're talking about short-term rental, are we talking about short-term rental in the way it's traditionally considered?
It would be a full-service hotel, just the way, that would be the way I would characterize it, is a full-service hotel, not short-term rental.
Thanks so much, and I appreciate, I appreciate the information in the policy report that came with the referral. But also, can you tell me, have you had, have you consulted with Vancouver General Hospital, where we've heard that there's not only people waiting for parking, you don't want a doctor who might have to operate on you, waiting for parking spot and circling around and around? So that's good to know, but more so on the side of, have they said that, have you had any conversations with them specifically around the need for hotel space for people visiting others in the hospital, considering Vancouver General serves populations beyond the City of Vancouver, even outside of Metro Vancouver?
There's been some conversations with VGH, including the parking issue. I think our understanding is that they are supportive of the use, that they see that it is needed in the area. The hospital has grown significantly in the 50 years since the original Park Inn was built on this site, and I think the demand is there for the type of uses that are being proposed here.
Okay, thanks. And just to confirm, is it fair to say that this is, this would be the closest hotel space to the hospital?
Yeah, I think that's, that would be correct.
And the cancer agency and serving other?
Yeah, the emergency admitting area is, is half a block away up Laurel Street, so it's, it's very close. It's the closest location that you could get. And in addition, the new station site on Laurel Street, I believe, will also be positioned directly across from, from this proposed hotel site.
Thanks very much. That answers my questions for you.
Thank you. On to Counselor Kirby Young.
Hi, over here. Hi. I do have a couple of questions for the applicant, and I'll start off while I have the opportunity. The current hotel, the Park Inn, has 117 rooms, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, so this represents almost a fourfold increase in total rooms and new hotel capacity in the city?
Correct.
Okay. And the Centennial Hotel Limited, the applicant, are they the current owners of the property? Or were they the current owners of the site when it was Park Inn, or has it shifted?
The current owners are Dengue Group.
Okay, so this is a new applicant. So it remains to be seen, I assume, I guess my question's leading to, you're not sharing which hotel brand it will be at this point?
At this point, they would like to maintain confidentiality on that, but we can say that it's a mid, mid-range target. It's not a, it's not a, approximately three-star type.
Okay, so, so a similar hotel level or rating to the Radisson branding that it carries now, and that brand affiliation? Okay. And then my other question relates to, because I'm a huge proponent of additional hotel space, we're dramatically short in the city, we've lost rooms, but also a big proponent of live music venues, and I know that the current Fairview Pub is a very popular and affordable and accessible live music venue. In the new build, because there'll be a lot of public space areas in the hotel, are there any plans, or has the, or have you had discussions related to continuation of live music on the site?
Yeah, so we submitted plans that were slightly revised from the original application, and they're, I think they're included in Appendix E on page three. The lower plan shows a kind of a pink-colored area, which is the newer version of the P1 level plan, and that pink area is being contemplated as the area that could potentially replace the Fairview Pub use in, within the existing, on the existing site, and that could be incorporated potentially into the new proposal.
Okay, but final kind of determination hasn't been made at this point, is that right?
We would be working with staff on that, but, but I think the owner is open to the possibility of bringing that use back. They, they do own the pub currently, so, so they would be open to considering bringing it back in.
Okay, because my understanding is that pub is used not just by hotel guests, but quite well-used by locals?
Yes.
Okay. And during your discussion with staff, were you made aware of the City of Vancouver's music strategy and the desire to have, not have a loss of live music spaces?
Yes, we were, we were aware, but I don't know the policy by heart, but we were aware of that, yes.
Okay, that's great. Maybe I can direct a question to staff now, as it relates to any intersection between the live music report or policies dropped by council, and how this relates to consideration of this application?
Certainly, I can probably take that question. So if I can rephrase your question, it's, it's really around, how can we understand this application in the context of, of the live music strategy and the loss of potential music space?
Yes.
Great, okay. So from my understanding, the live music strategy really does reaffirm the importance of space for local artists. I, I believe they have a goal of approximately 800,000 square feet of new space, and that they are setting a goal of no net loss. So I think that what's being introduced in this project is sufficient floor area to accommodate the opportunity for live music venue to go back in, in fact, probably a lot more than what currently exists. So with the land use that's proposed here in terms of restaurant Class B, that would absolutely allow the operator and the applicant to obtain a business license to operate.
But there's no requirements, I only have a minute left, so I just want to press on. So there's no requirements, there's no condition that requires replacement of that space, or a desired condition by the Director of Planning?
We don't have a condition contained in the report. It is a private site, and it's a private establishment, though the land use is there for future opportunities for the pub to go back in with live music.
Right, because it's not like sort of a, the SRO policy where there's a replacement cost, or it's a goal for the live music, it's not a condition that can be imposed?
Correct. My understanding is that it is not a condition of this, of, it's not a condition.
But based on policy, it's not a condition the city could impose, is that correct?
Correct, that's correct. From my understanding with our ACCS colleagues, it's not a condition that has to be imposed on rezoning projects.
Yeah, if I can just add to that, Mr. Mayor, I know we're out of time here, but there's no condition on it currently. Like, they could stop offering music, and there's nothing to protect it the way it is now, so what we're doing is, is protecting the possibility for, for a music venue to go in there in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, just on five minutes. Over to Counselor Boyle.
Thanks, I have just one question for the applicant, actually. I had a similar question to Counselor DeGenova about the sort of typical hotel functions and concierge and front desk, and particularly as it relates to staffing, but I understand there will be a conventional hotel with cleaning staff and jobs there.
Yeah, the hotel, full-service hotel function's just like every other normal hotel. The primary entrance is off the lane. At that point, the patron can have the opportunity to check in to the full-service hotel, or check in to the long-term stay units. The long-term stay units, the intent is, I think it's somewhere between three, three or four nights to two weeks, and, and I believe the service component of the longer-term stay units is slightly reduced, so room cleaning and so on might be once every few days or once a week, rather than every day.
Okay. Is the plan for the building to have, will there be natural gas, or is it electric in terms of emissions?
We're still working through the engineering, but we're committed to the, all the green building policies, which will be required as a part of this rezoning. In addition, we're looking at additional kind of considerations that will help increase the sustainability of the project, including potentially a hybrid building structure, potentially use of wood in the project.
Okay, thanks. And actually, to your other answer, I'm curious, because I've spent some time around there and the laneways aren't super walkable, is there a plan for the hotel entrances in the laneway, how it is a bit more pedestrian-friendly?
Yeah, we've been working with staff on the, the kind of upgrading of the character of the lane, in particular, the, the kind of drop-off area, which will, will take a significant amount of frontage on the south side of the project, so the lane experience will be significantly improved in this area.
Okay, for, not just for vehicles, but for pedestrians?
Pedestrians as well, yes.
Okay, great, thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Frye.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. And thanks, this is obviously a pretty exciting proposition, and largest hospital in the province, I think. Obviously, hotel need, we, we know that there's a significant amount of hotel need in the city now, and this is serving a definitive need. What I didn't see in, in the report, though, was any real mention of accessibility, and obviously, considering that a lot of folks who are attending the hospital will have varying accessibility needs and wheelchairs and so forth, and there's, there's a grade, are there specific considerations you're putting into this proposal to, to address accessibility issues and?
Yeah, we're working through the accessible unit requirements with the hotel operator. They also have a minimum number that they'd like to see, so that's, I think, a number that's going to be worked through, but we are, one of the things, we, we do understand that this is a hospital-serving hotel, there's a large number of patrons that'll be staying here, that, that have business directly with the hospital, so we will like, we would like to increase the number of accessible units to the, to the level that, that works for both the operator and the owner.
Oh, so, so do you have a number for accessible?
Do I have a number now? No, I don't, but we will be working through that number. We're still in early days of negotiation with the operator.
Okay, okay, I mean, hopefully that's something we'll see, a real sort of thoughtful approach given to, certainly given the population. What's the thought around the phased development of this? Is this like a once-and-done kind of thing, or are you going to be doing it in chunks?
No, the, I think the current idea is to build this project in one phase, and not to phase out this, this development.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Harbick.
Hi there, this way. I know it's confusing. You're familiar with other hotels in, in town?
Yes.
So is this sort of like the Sutton Place Hotel, where you've got Le Residants for long-term on one side, and the Sutton Place for short-term hotel on the other?
It's similar, but it's, it's a slightly different concept. I think the, the idea with the, the long-term is that it's of a shorter duration, not, not where people can stay for longer periods of time, and, and I think the, the service integration with, with the hotel is a little bit more complete, I guess, if you would.
But the intent is really for people that are coming, and they've got family in the, in the hospital?
Yes, yeah, the, the units will have kitchenettes, I mean, it will serve for a longer period of time, but the intent is not to, to stay for months, for example.
Thank you for that. The other thing, again, I want to revisit the discussion around the Fairview Pub, since you're in touch with the owners. It is, you know, one of the last places for, you know, our friends in live music to go on a regular basis. It's, it's really pivotal to the, to the music community in town. Is the owner aware of that? Are they sensitive to that?
Yeah, they are aware. I mean, we've had two open house meetings, and quite a few members from the community showed up, and that was one of the things that we heard quite loudly and quite clearly, and, and I, I think we've responded to that by already designing the potential space in the building, and, you know, we're looking forward to working with staff as, as we move forward.
So what I'm getting at is, yeah, there's, there's no heritage component or anything, but there's a lot of memories in that place, I can tell you. It would be great if, if there was a way to get some of the memorabilia and, and, you know, internal components of that place and work them in, even if it's just on the surface to, you know, because again, there's been decades of, of live music in that venue.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's an excellent point, and certainly we can, it's the first time we've heard it, actually, even with all the people from the neighborhood, but I think it's a good point, and I think it's.
I think initially, it's getting over the shock of not having it there, but I know what, I've spent way too many hours in there over the years, and I know that there's a lot of, of stuff on the walls and the stage and things that are, that could, you know, be taken out, preserved, and then integrated into a new pub. So it's, if you can get that message back, that would be great. I know there's nothing we can do about it structurally, but it would be nice to, to see that acknowledged.
Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Weed.
Yeah, a few things. The wellness certification that the building's going for, how difficult was that in the process, and how, and financially was it difficult? Because there's a lot of really amazing elements in that certification, and I'm wondering, as a city, to see it more often, I'm wondering, how difficult was it to go through that process?
So it's not a requirement for rezoning, but it's something that we've been working on with the owner, and I think because it's, it's a hospital-serving hotel, it's something that we would like to continue to, to pursue. In terms of the feasibility of it, it, because it's a LEED gold project, WELL, it tandems quite well with LEED, and there's some additional requirements on top, but many of the requirements that are basic for LEED also serve the WELL checklist, the WELL requirements, so we'd be looking at the additional ones, and, and obviously monitoring the feasibility of those, but we are serious about moving forward and trying to achieve a wellness certification as well.
Okay, and that talks about the architectural, ambitious, hybrid wood building strategy or something?
Yes.
Can you describe that a little bit more?
Yeah, I mean, I think the building form, we kept it deliberately fairly simple, because one of the things that we're still exploring is the idea of using mass timber in, in various components of, of the project. And we're still in the process of evaluating that, but I think, you know, we're in the era, era of reducing embodied carbon in our projects, and even though it's not a requirement here as architects, I think we want to take leadership, and I think the owner is also seeing this project as a, as a kind of an, an opportunity to, to maybe set a benchmark, so we'd like to, to keep exploring that, but wood, wood is certainly a possibility right now for this project.
Okay, and on the western side, the bike-share component that looks like to be added, there's a AAA bike lane that stops at Seventh Avenue. Was there conversations on how this building could help kind of facilitate the north-south components of biking, mostly as more electric bikes become more readily available?
So the, the location of the bike-share pad has been a subject of great conversation between engineering, planning, and ourselves. I think we have a location at the moment that seems to satisfy all the departments. I think we have a location at the moment that seems to satisfy all the departments. Planning was hoping to keep the section along Laurel Street much more open and more green. I think there's a kind of concept or an idea of extending Laurel Street down to Falls Creek as a greenway, so not interrupting that pedestrian zone with the bike share. So we've positioned it up to the south and close to the lane at the moment.
Okay, I guess my question to staff then, are we looking at creating a proper, I know that there's a bike facility, a large one on 10th that's for BGH, and we have a AAA bike lane that stops at Seventh. So are we looking to make that connection as we see more electric bikes to be able to make that out?
Certainly, let me direct that possibly to our transportation team. Okay. So would we be able to come back to that question and get a better sense from our transportation group?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks councillor Domenado.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. I did want to just follow up on the rooftop landscaping that's there. And I'm just curious, there's mention in the report around some of the landscaping on the ground level being sort of publicly accessible, then some on the podium being more just for the hotel users. I'm just curious about the rooftop, is that going to be publicly accessible? I'm thinking about the views and sort of opportunity to sort of open that up. Is that contemplated?
I think the rooftops are currently contemplated as hotel guests. And then Level Four, which is that courtyard area between the two towers, is an area that's more publicly accessible through the main lobby.
Okay. Do you think it might be something that would be looked at or considered in light of my question?
We can run it by the owner and the hotel operators. There's always security concerns, but if it's possible, we'll try to incorporate public access.
Okay, no, I appreciate that. And just to follow up again on the, just for clarity for me, is the, I mean, the subject of sort of short-term hotel stay versus long-term, that it is really intended to be sort of additional hotel and not short-term rentals?
Correct.
This concept? Okay, thank you.
Thank you councillor Swanson.
Yeah, I was just going to ask about that plaza between the buildings. And it is going to be accessible to the public?
Yeah, it's directly below that area is the main lobby. And one of the things that we're looking at through design development is a way to get up with a stair and through the elevators to this mid-level outdoor space.
Or maybe a way to get up from the outside?
It's sort of three stories up from Broadway.
I need something.
A bit of a challenge to...
An escalator.
Yeah.
That would be really nice if it could be considered part of the public realm.
There is an area on the second floor, which is accessible from the lobby, that we're exploring public access directly from Broadway, so that would...
Okay, thank you.
Great, thanks. I don't see any other questions from councillors, so we can, let's see here, move on to hearing from the public?
Maybe perhaps I, just looping back on councillor Weeb's earlier question, do we have that opportunity at this time?
Sure, actually, I have. Okay, have councillor Boyle with the question?
Just going to ask a point of order, which is, I'm wondering if we have a stop time or if I can move that we continue...
We don't really have an official stop time because this is the last item we're dealing with, am I right clerks? Is that... Okay, so if we want to hear from speakers now, we'd have to extend past five o'clock. And again, this is the only item on the agenda, and there are one, two, three, four speakers that are listed.
I would like to move to hear from speakers and hopefully finish this item before breaking for dinner.
All right, so we've got to move or motion on favor. Got a second from councillor De Genova. Anybody opposed? Great, okay, thanks very much. So we'll move on to speakers. Sorry.
Oh, no, that's why. I was just on to second it.
Yep, I was just going to check with councillor Weeb. Did you, councillor Weeb, did you have something that you... Right, do we want to hear that before we move to speakers? Okay, sure. Staff, do you want to just reply and then we'll...
So just looping back on councillor Weeb's question, Rosemary Jaskovic for Transportation, just wanted to confirm that there are plans and intents to improve the Laurel Street bikeway connection in the north-south direction. That's going to come out of the Broadway plan, so the extent of that are not known, but it can potentially include improvements such as a protected bike lane and other improved public realm, sorry, public realm improvements as well. So just to clarify that for you councillor Weeb.
Okay, are we putting an easement or an opportunity for that to happen in this current project?
I do believe we are taking setbacks on the Laurel frontage, sorry, 5.5 meters from back of curb. So that will allow us the flexibility in the future to have the right-of-way to make improvements within that setback, as well as with the right-of-way that we already have.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Great, thanks. I don't see anybody else on the list, so we can move to hear from speakers. We have Gwendol Kasteland. Thanks for coming in. Nice to see you.
Good evening councillor, thank you for having me. So my name is Gwendol Kasteland, I'm speaking to you in the role of manager of sustainable destination development at Tourism Vancouver. And thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to this proposed development at 88898 West Broadway. So as you know, the visitor economy in Vancouver is growing at a good pace. Visitor volume has been growing at 3.2% since 2010, reaching 10.7 million visitors in 2018. We don't have the final numbers for 2019, but it appears to be on track to exceed that number this year. And we have some of the highest occupancy rates in the country, reaching 80.8% for the last full year of data, which was 2018. As staff mentioned, there's the 2018 interim hotel development policy that identified quite a significant loss of hotel rooms in the city, at 1,100 rooms. And then just most recently this year, the loss of another 372 rooms with the closing of the Four Seasons Hotel. We're encouraged to see the conversations in the employment lands and economy review and the report from HEMSON that really also highlighted the importance of hotel rooms in the city. And so pleased to be engaging with that conversation. This is the first significant development to come to Vancouver in some time. The last large development was the JW Marriott and Douglas Hotels, which brought 517 rooms, and the Exstens Hotel in 2018, which brought 200 rooms. And we're still just sort of keeping our head above water as far as the number of rooms in the city. Following the interim hotel development policy, Tourism Vancouver completed a Tourism 2030 draft scenario report, looking at the potential growth scenarios for Vancouver. And in there, we landed on a conservative growth scenario of about 2% growth between now and 2030, which would give us about 13.4 million visitors in 2030. And we've been spending the last couple of years really thinking about what is the impact of that growth? And are we, with our current capacity, able to meet that need? And to that, we hired a consulting company, M&amp;P, to do some work for us, and looking at the foregone visitor spending, if we're not able to meet that growth in visitor demand. And in that study, they came out with a number of a cumulative total of foregone visitor spending of $1.8 billion in downtown Vancouver alone. So this accounts for about 50% of that spending is on hotel rooms, and the other 50% is on retail, food, transportation, and entertainment in the local economy. Further in that study, the foregone full-time equivalent jobs that would be not created by not meeting that capacity would be about 32,000 full-time equivalent jobs. And the impact on taxation would be about $500 million cumulatively between now and 2030. This proposed hotel represents an additional 320 rooms to the inventory when you factor the loss of 117 rooms from the park-in and suites. And the mix of the short-term and long-term stay types, all under the sort of hotel, we feel is really valuable to the destination in increasing the diversity of types of rooms that are available, particularly as was noted with the proximity to the hospital, but also for our meetings and conventions business in the city with the access by canal line and also the extension to the Broadway Skytrain. Other industries that might benefit regularly use the longest-term stay would be film and television for productions. We're sensitive to the loss of the Fairview Pub as they were a member of Tourism Vancouver for nearly 20 years and are a well-loved fixture in the city as a music venue. And are pleased to see that the provision of the large retail, ground-level retail floor plate enables the possibility for future accommodation of music venues in the future. To close, we hope that this hotel will be built to the latest requirements of our leading low-carbon green building code, and then in a few years, we'll be able to celebrate an addition of a leading wellness-oriented and leading sustainable hotel in Vancouver.
Great, thanks. You have a question from councillor Kerbyon?
Hi, hi, Mr. Kasteland, thanks for being here. I wonder, you've done a good job of outlining kind of the economic impact, and I think it's a looming and dire story that we need to talk more about in terms of job loss and the economic impact of spending on, not just hotel, but, you know, visitors come, they spend in the shops and local retail, and they go to restaurants, and they visit attractions, and they employ people. But can you speak a little bit about kind of the other impacts, other than economically? Like what that means in terms of, does that mean that, as, just like Vancouver real estate became more expensive, only a certain type of visitor can come to the city that can afford it because our hotel rates are becoming really high? And does it also mean, for example, that we are having, we'd have a challenge in attracting a lot of those things that add to our cultural fabric, like cultural events, music, sporting events, because they can't find or afford the hotel rooms?
Yeah, so it's definitely something we're looking at. We have noted a drift in the diversity of rooms in the city. So the rooms that we have lost, for the most part, the Four Seasons notwithstanding, have generally been in the one, two, and three-star categories. And so we're seeing a drift towards higher-end and more expensive cities. So we're also seeing that the average daily rate in the city is increasing year over year, which is, in some regards, a good problem to have for all our incumbent hotel members and for the community. But where it requires, I think, further study, and we don't have the data specifically to be able to support this, but to try and understand, as the destination becomes more expensive as the capacity of rooms that are there, are we, is there any drift in the share of spending from the visitor? Is the hotel stay...
It limits the type of visitor that can come here?
It can either limit the type of visitor that's staying here or limit their ability to spend in all the other businesses in the region.
I'm going to press on because I have a limited amount of time. So can you speak to, are we seeing turning away events now, whether it's educational conferences or large conventions or other groups because they can't secure the size of room blocks that they need to host their event in Vancouver?
It becomes an increasing concern for our meetings and conventions team to try and secure the adequate size of room blocks. Specifically, the Four Seasons Hotel, which was a downtown convention hotel with a sufficient amount of rooms to be able to offer room blocks. This type of hotel here, which has that, overall, is large enough to be able to set aside blocks. Smaller hotels, like for example, something that's 80 rooms, wouldn't be able to look five years in the future and offer 50 or 100 rooms because they just wouldn't have that. But it's really the hotels that have enough rooms that are able to offer blocks to accommodate the needs of the meetings and conventions.
Okay, so a project like this that has conference and meeting spaces, important too in terms of being able to attract that type of business?
Yeah, in-house as well, yeah.
Because our meeting space and facility books out?
Yeah, I think they're having some conference facilities onsite, which is also, I think, a multi-use type space that can accommodate external business but also intrinsic Vancouver meeting space.
Okay, and can you tell us, not to blow this off the top of your head, how many people the tourism industry employs in Vancouver specifically?
So direct and indirect, the number that we, the latest study we have is about 70,000 jobs in Vancouver.
Significant. Okay, thank you, thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, and that's it for questions. Thanks for coming in tonight. Nathan Davidovitz. Thanks for coming in.
Members of council, I don't know if councillor Weeb, he's the liaison for the Person with Disabilities Advisory Committees have passed anything to other members of council?
No, you can't ask questions, you're just...
Well, no, I don't know. So that's, to save time, if he did, if he didn't, then I have to go more into detail.
Yeah, we're not actually responding to you, you're just telling us your thoughts for five minutes and on...
Well, I mean, I've called his secretary, left messages...
No, no, this is about this project.
And nobody called me back, so I don't know.
Sir, it's about this project right here.
No, no, I support this hotel and the pub, of course. I've been there many times since 1971, so I have no, you know, no concern about that. I mean, you know, they just build a 50-story civic hotel beside a Skytrain in Surrey. I mean, you know, there's nothing wrong with, you know, with building hotels beside stations, you know. But if councillor Weeb has not passed all the motions from the committee...
Sir, that's an entirely different topic, and so we're directed in a public hearing to speak only about this project?
No, no, you're not directed at all, you're wrong about it. Please, I don't want to challenge the chair, okay? I can speak about anything, accessibility to the thing and so forth. So please, Mr. Mayor, I've been here longer than you, I know the rules better than you, and the city...
This isn't going...
There's no director of legal services sitting there and so forth.
Okay, thank you, that's it for today. It is, thank you, thank you for coming in. We're going to ask you to be removed, we'll ask you to be removed. We're going to ask you to be removed. If you don't... No, you don't, sir, you're being disrespectful in the chamber, you're talking off-topic, so I'm going to have to... Okay councillor, I'd like to call recess for five minutes until this is resolved. I'm sorry, sir, you know, I've tried to inform you of this, what we're talking about here, and you're showing disrespect in the chamber, so we're going to call a recess, councillor, for five minutes. Thank you.
We have Dennis Donahue next, just so you can get ready when you're, but I'll get the other councillors into the chamber. Thank you very much, Mr. Donahue, and up to five minutes, whenever you're ready. It'll show up right beside you, you see it there? Great, please go ahead. I'll just turn on your mic.
And council, the following is respectfully presented for your consideration, review, and disposition. First of all, my background, I'm a trained senior military parachutist with five years of experience of active airborne operations. While serving overseas, I qualified as a private pilot under UK flight regs, but I never converted that to a Canadian licence. Okay, Oxford Dictionary defines the word reason as, quote, "fact or circumstances serving as a ground or motive for action, intellectual power, thinking faculty," thus we get reasonable, which is, quote, "having sound judgment." One of the primary duties of government is public safety. Flight safety involves the safety of the public. This presentation raises questions with regard to the safety of the public, especially near the Vancouver General Hospital's H1 helipad. On 1st June 2009, Air France Flight 447 made an uncontrolled descent into the Atlantic. Contributing factors included pilot error, visibility, special weather conditions, equipment failure, and aircraft design. An aircraft, an air crash is now referred to as an uncontrolled contact with terrain. Tall buildings and other obstacles form part of terrain.
I think I know where you're going with this, but if you can move it along to specifics, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay, what specifics do you require?
We're here in this public hearing to address this, the conversion of, or to approve-
Okay, if you indulge me for another few seconds, I'll get to that point.
Please do, thank you.
Transport Canada, of course, has jurisdiction over flight operations in Canada. This includes the perimeter and proximity of buildings and obstacles and distractions near airports. However, in my research, I learned that the city of Toronto decided it was necessary to pass bylaws with regard to flights in and around hospitals. The role purpose of an air ambulance service is to get a patient to emergency treatment faster. In BC, Helijet does this under contract as a for-profit company. Last year, we, the taxpayer, agreed to pay them over $100 million, even though they lost their authority to land at H1 helipads previously. Vancouver Sun, March 19, 2018. Helijet was fined a total of $26,250 on six counts over four separate days for failure to operate an aircraft, quote, "in accordance with the operating limitations set out in the aircraft flight manual," unquote. Then, one of the articles, it was noted that Helijet management argued against the citation. "Defensiveness with regard to flight safety is a red flag." In 1998, I took a course in accident investigation at the Justice Institute. Two key principles were consistently repeated: first, take copious notes, and two, walk through all your info. So as a resident of the area of Tenth and Oak, and having been taught as a soldier the principle of know your ground, I walked through my info. Currently, to the south and to the southwest of the H1 helipad are towers of 15, 25, and 17 stories respectively, roughly. So to the south and southwest of the helipad between Willow and Oak on 12th Avenue, we have a tower that is about 200 feet. My next page has been previously covered. To get a mental picture of how high and how close these towers will be to the H1 helipad, I invite anyone who wants to do so to walk a few blocks west to the south side of West Tenth and Willow, they can then look north towards Broadway. You will see the Fairmont Building, which is about 15 stories high. Take that mental picture, one block west towards VGH emerge, where the gradient is uphill, higher ground, and you can relate height and proximity to the H1 helipad. Helicopter pilots have all four limbs totally engaged when flying. Takeoff and landing are the most dangerous times and create the most stress on the engines, airframe, and landing gear. All pilots are taught to drill for engine failure-force landing. If the engines fail, auto-rotation of the main rotor occurs. The rate of descent is 50 feet per second. Count 1,001, 1,002, 1,003, 1,004, that's 200 feet.
And just 30 seconds left.
If the tip of the main or the tail rotor strikes an obstacle, that sets up loss of control. In an urban environment, that's a life-threatening situation. The entrance of surface emergency vehicles, that is ambulances, lies immediately under the helipad at VGH. If there is an engine failure-force landing and the impact area is West End, you should, you shut down ambulance activity as well. And I haven't even considered climate change, I don't have time for that, but that's coming. All the experts in the world say we are in a climate crisis.
Can I ask you if you support or oppose this?
Oh, I'm here to create awareness, because if there is an engine failure-force landing, they've got no place to go.
Okay, and you think this building will make this better or worse, or?
Well, it is a, as far as I'm concerned, it's a risk to flight safety.
Okay, that's great, well, thank you very much for coming in. You have questions from councillor Dejanova? Go ahead, councillor Dejanova.
First of all, thank you for your service and thank you for coming today. I just, considering there's already buildings in the vicinity of this area, including a hospital, notably that's where the helicopter lands, usually with patients in it that are in urgent need of medical care, and that's going to happen regardless of this proposed project. Do, your concern is, is just in general that there are buildings around there, or is your concern about this building?
Well, my concern is there appears to be a perimeter of tall buildings going up in the area of the flight path. And generally in that area, you know, weather visibility is one of the criteria, okay? And anything that is above ground is an obstacle. So what I'm saying is, sure, that's already been done, I agree with you, though, they are there, you know, no one's about to deconstruct what already exists. My concern is a general concern about the airspace in this general area and encroachments on that airspace.
So when we weigh the benefits of a project against concerns of a project, do you think that there are great benefits to having a, and you don't have to answer my question, a hotel that would provide for accommodation for families that were visiting or for people who needed to make trips to the hospital and didn't want to commute from downtown hotel if they could even find one? Do you think that that's a fairly decent benefit?
All that I'm trying to say, and it appears I've missed the point, is to create, to create an awareness of the risks. That flight that I quoted, Flight 447, that was a routine flight. There were, there were three aircrew on board.
I understand what you're saying, I just, as the mayor stated, we really have to focus on the project, so I'm trying to weigh the benefit of that versus your concerns. Each of us, each time we get on an aircraft, I'm sure statistically, take a higher risk than if we walk down the street. So, I mean, statistically, you have to weigh the benefit of that. I'm trying to weigh the benefit of this project and the benefits that it creates versus the concerns that you're raising, so do you think that, I mean, what do you think of, do you believe that there's a benefit? Or do you just not, if you want to not answer the question, you can say that too.
Well, I'm glad to answer your question, and there is a polarity that you've established, you know, the financial benefits to the community and the, you know, anyone's objection to that, okay? I love Vancouver, I've lived here for nearly 36 years, okay? But what I'm trying to say is, you know, future considerations, the long-term, what if Transport Canada decides, you know, well, we've seen Australia, the smoke there, we've seen our own experience here in British Columbia with smoke here, what if visibility is restricted and then air movements out, in, and out of the helipad to the hospital are restricted for whatever reason? You know, what about your family? What if they're somewhere where they have to come in on that helicopter and they can't get there?
We're not allowed to answer questions, but I mean, what I will say in my next question to you is, I would hope that my child did have a helipad to land in a helicopter on if she needed emergency access to Children's Hospital or to VGH. So, aside from that, in looking at the hotel rooms specifically here, do you see a benefit for your neighborhood, for your community that currently doesn't have hotel rooms?
Financially, aside from flight safety, absolutely, there's a benefit.
What about for the people, not financially so much, but for them to have close proximity to their loved ones at a hospital? Is there a benefit?
Well, that's, that's not what I'm talking about. I'm, as I pointed out, I'm talking about-
That's all my questions.
-flight safety overall.
Thank you very much.
That's all, I'm not criticizing, I'm not judging the financial benefits, all that I'm saying is, I'm here to create an awareness. You know, for aircrew, you know-
That's all, that's all my time, but also, our questions have to stick to the public hearing and the application in front of us, I just wanted to say that, thank you.
Councillor Frye?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor, thanks, Mr. Donahue. Just in your experience, because I hear what you're saying and appreciate the concern that you're expressing, are there, like, building modifications that might be considerable, like, obviously, lights or radar sensor kind of things, or the-
Well, Transport Canada requires and makes a distinction between visual flight rules and instrument flight rules. I think we're still a long way away from instrument flight rules with respect to helicopters, okay? That would be great. I mean, you know, the fact that we can now put a rocket in space and bring it back, you know, recover it, you know, the recovery element of it reduces the expense of spaceflight. But the thing is, I know nobody here is going to advocate for reducing the size of buildings in the perimeter. All that I'm trying to say is, you know, the technology for instrument control of helicopters, I don't even know where that is in the future, but, you know, lighting, I fortunately walked away from the three situations that my instructors told me would kill me unless I did the right thing, but I became confused in those three situations. But fortunately, I did the right thing because of training. I know these pilots are good, these pilots will tell you how good they are and they're better than any other pilot, but the upshot of the situation is, all that I'm talking, one of the findings from that Air France crash was that, one of the experts said, it takes about 16 different things to occur in order for an aircraft crash, uncontrolled contact with terrain, as they now call it, okay? It takes about 16 things, but the thing is, what I'm saying is, visibility, pilot training, et cetera, the points that I've already mentioned, are contributing factors. And as to how you do that, you know, can you do it with lights? Well, what if there's a power failure?
Fair enough, I mean, but I appreciate the concern and I mean, I think maybe there are some, get us a little closer to addressing some of those concerns with some more simple fixes like lights and yes, if there's a power failure and a smokesstorm, then yeah.
A transport, if you want to find out more, Transport Canada controls the perimeter, you know, proximity of all, all landing zones.
Yeah, thanks for sharing your insights, it's important to bring it up in this context, thank you.
Thank you, sir, that's it for questions for you today, thanks for coming in and thank you very much for your service.
My pleasure, thank you.
Thank you. We have Mari Kane. Thanks very much for coming in, up to five minutes and just, we're trying to stick to the specific, please, the topic of this.
Oh, sure, I'll be fast.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you for allowing me to speak, council. My name's Mary Kane and I actually live right in the neighborhood here at Tenth and Alberta, and I come to you in no official capacity, but as a big-time live music fan, and I want to thank the councilwomen who have already voiced their support for the very Fairview pub as it is, which is a wonderful pub, my husband and I just love it. And when I first saw the big development sign in front of it, I just almost cried, I really was so upset, and I thought, what can I do, who can I write to? And I just found out about this meeting today, so I'm not well-prepared, but I was also encouraged to hear the developers' words about the possibility that the Fairview will be retained as a retail venue and expand it, that would be awesome. I did hear some mention about the conditionality of it, and I guess, since I know that others are supporting the Fairview pub, I would, I guess, what I would like to advocate for is that it be a condition of approval, not just an option. And if possible, that the owners, the current operators, owners of the Fairview pub, be given the first right of refusal, I guess is the word, so that they can continue holding the shows the way they have for, what, over 30 years? Because Vancouver cannot afford to lose music clubs, there are too many, there have been too many closures, musicians need more venues, there's lots of musicians in this town, not enough places to play. In fact, if you look at a Google map of live music venues in Vancouver, you will see that there is nothing west of Main or south of Falls Creek other than the Fairview pub. It really is, it's an oasis in a desert here, and so, you know, where are people going to go? The beauty of the Fairview pub, and I hate to say I'm of that age, but it does cater to patrons of a certain age, and they love it, and they, the pub presents early shows that are very popular with seniors and, you know, it allows them to drink and dance and still be in bed by 9:00 PM, it's beautiful. So I'm afraid if the Fairview pub closes, those seniors will be out on the- So I'm afraid if the Fairview pub closes, those seniors will be out on the street making trouble, getting into who knows what all. And so, you know, they need, we need a place to go on the weekends, you know, late at night. We go, we walk down there. We'll go out at 10:30 and be back by 1:30, you know? It's sweet. So I want to continue being able to walk to my favorite music venue. And I hope you will make the retention of the Fairview pub a condition of approval. And that's all I have to say. Any questions?
Yep, there are some questions. For Counselor Hardwick, up to five minutes, please.
Hi, over here.
Hi.
So obviously, I hear you. I'm one of those people. And my husband and I and our community play music at the Fairview and have for decades. So totally get it. But a big shout out for the Corduroy down by Kitsland Beach. There are other music venues, a little bit further to walk.
Quite.
But I don't know what we're going to be able to do in terms of conditions, but I did have a, what do you think about, for people that are regulars at the Corduroy, if we could inventory all the good stuff that's on the walls and things that are memorabilia? Is that something the community could be doing?
Oh, I don't know. I mean, yes, I actually had my eye on some of that memorabilia myself. So I thought if it does close down, there are a few pieces I'd like. But I don't think that, you know, I think it's really a location thing.
Well, there's two parts, right? There's the physical space, which I think there's an indication that they want to at least minimally keep a pub. And I think we're hearing here, we want to hear the music component of that stay. But the Fairview is a brand. I mean, it, there's a long list of bands that have played there over the years, for example, that should be memorialized in some way, wouldn't you say? I mean, don't you think that there's some things that could be, you know, distilled from the venue and then put back into something that's new?
Into a new space on that location?
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely. I wish they would just build the building around it as it is now. I mean, why can't they do that?
Yeah, I think that's...
Yeah, I know. You know, if they could keep the woodwork and the bar and, you know, all that great stuff, the pool tables, I don't play pool, but some people like that. But, you know, everything about it, I love it and I want to keep it there. And I know there are umpteen people in this town that want to keep it around.
Well, hopefully the applicant's taken all this in.
And I will say, you said you spent many hours there. I will say that those were not hours well wasted. Anyway.
Thanks very much. You have questions from Counselor Dejanova.
Thanks so much. I appreciate that you've mentioned that this is a place that's near and dear to you. My question to you is, what if, what if the Fairview pub didn't want to, even if it was to stay the Fairview pub? I think our city manager raised a good point in answering a question when he said, and it's a question to you, do you agree that, I mean, if, for instance, a Japanese food restaurant decided to become a Greek food restaurant, should we say, "No, you can only have a business license there to be a Japanese food restaurant"? So I love live music. I'm a liaison to the Arts and Culture Committee here. I'm just wondering, do you think that it's, we should be dealing with this here on the site or looking at the strategy and the policy with the committee about having more live venues? Do you think that we, we need to be dealing with this here? Do you think we should mandate something and have a condition if, if that could mean actually that nothing happens and the Fairview pub could choose to shut down or change into something else? If this didn't move forward?
If the project didn't move forward?
Yeah, I'm going to ask our staff about that, but I'm pretty sure that that could happen.
That they would just pack it in?
I don't know what they would choose to do, but I'd have to imagine it would be their decision. Would you?
Oh, for sure. Well, it would have to be their decision ultimately to stay there. In conversation with the people that work there, I believe that they all want to stay there. They're very nervous about their jobs.
Is that the owner's?
Didn't the owner express an interest in staying there?
Well, I can talk to staff about it, but if it's not a viable business and they're looking at, you know, possibly coming back, but I'm not sure if it's the same model. I mean, what I'm asking is, is are you, is it about the Fairview pub and this specific location, the type of music? Or is it about making sure that we are aware of that? And I'm sure there's lots of councillors that might be considering a motion for another meeting, maybe inputting some conditions into our music strategy as to what we're considering. Do you think that we need to look at this project considering it might not come together if the owners chose to do something different there?
Oh, boy.
Sorry. You don't have to answer my question, but these are the hard decisions I have to weigh.
Um, I, you know, I would hate to hold up the project just on this point. I want to support your second option about just encouraging more music in the...
Oh, I don't have any options.
But yeah, no, like I said, I won't, I wouldn't want to hold up the project, but I would hope that it would be some kind of condition that there be a music venue in this project in the same place. And if the Fairview owners want to continue operating it, they should be given preference or support or help.
Okay. Do you feel though that maybe they've been there a long time and if they wanted to change what they were doing? If they were, I don't know. I'm going to ask staff these questions, but I can't ask you these questions after staff. So would it be something you'd be concerned about if they said, "No, we just can't make that, the numbers work on that, but we'd like to stay operating as the Fairview pub"? And then you get a new live music venue, but the Fairview pub is out and has to find a new place where it might not be in Fairview. So it'll be interesting if it's called the Fairview pub.
Well, I would have to say, they would have to be the final deciders of that question. I don't, I'm not in a place to tell a business what they, how they should operate their business.
So then you, what I'm hearing from you is, then you wouldn't want to see a condition on it because they, a condition would make it so that that would tell them how to operate their business?
Uh huh.
Is that, is that correct?
I would, okay. Then let me say this, I would like them to have first dibs on being in that venue when it's rebuilt.
I think they already do, but I really appreciate this. I'm so sorry.
I'm just here to support it, you know?
I will ask, I will ask staff these questions and I really appreciate you coming out today.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Kirby Young.
Ashley, if the mayor, if there's no further speakers, when you call for them, I'm happy to move the recommendations and then I have an amendment.
Okay, we still have to actually call for speakers, so I haven't done that yet. Any questions to this speaker? No questions? I think you're done.
Thanks very much, everyone.
Thank you very much. And so, now that I have no more speakers on the list, I am going to call for speakers. Does anybody else who'd like to speak to this? The application on Broadway? Second time? Anybody else? Third time? Okay. So seeing there are no speakers, the speakers list is now closed. As few or no public comments were received on this item after 5:00 PM today, I suggest we now close the receipt of public comments and move on to hearing closing comments. So does the applicant have any closing comments? You don't? Okay, thank you very much. Staff, any closing comments?
No closing comments, thank you.
Thank you very much. Does counsel have any questions for staff? And I have Sarah Kirby Young on the list. Counselor Kirby Young, I'm sorry.
I was going to move the recommendation and amendment, but I'll wait if counsel asks questions and do that after.
You are within your right to move it if you like. Of course, you have the floor.
And that still provides counsel the opportunity to ask their questions after?
Not directly, they'd have to be through...
And I will put myself at the barbecue and let counsel ask their questions first.
Okay, Counselor Dejanova.
Thanks so much, Mr. Mayor. I just had a question of staff. I know that's the only, I can't ask the applicant questions, but I do believe, and if I need a recess, I can take one to roll the tape back, but I understood that the Fairview pub was planning to come back. I don't know if that is as a music venue, because to tie them to that would be unfair, because maybe some nights they do it, maybe they won't, maybe the rents will be higher for them, maybe they won't be able to, maybe they'll need more seats. I'm not sure. I just, I just know that usually when it comes to pro formas, it's all about money. So I'm wondering if you can, if you can maybe shed some light on if this could be a possible struggle to put conditions on this and if it would be in line with our policy or would we only be doing this here? Thank you.
Thank you for the question. I think I'll try to answer it in two different ways. So just for counsel's clarity, the owner of the current site is also the owner of the Fairview pub. And in terms of potential hardships of reintroducing the pub, I mean, that is really up to the owner to determine whether or not that is something that would fit within their future plans. Just also further noting that staff are very aware and we've definitely heard the importance of this space and not just the physical space, but the attachment to memory and sense of place and the intangible pieces. So, but I don't think that it's really within staff's or staff's ability to require an establishment, a private establishment, to re-enter back into the space. However, I'm sure there are provisions or abilities to explore opportunities to preserve certain elements that maybe are of value to the community within this proposal.
So that was my next question for you, is if something's privately owned and someone chooses to put it on display, that's really great. I want to encourage more of that, but maybe people won't do that if they're afraid that there's going to be conditions tying it to be in the public realm for always. So I don't know who owns that memorabilia. Could you, is that a question you could answer? Sorry to put you on the spot. But if the pub owns it and is privately owned by different people that they borrowed it from, I'm just a bit concerned. I mean, I guess we could try, but...
So is your question, is it too much of a hardship to require or write in language that would seek greater efforts from the applicant to reintroduce certain elements back in?
Well, if they don't own those elements, I don't know what this memorabilia is. I've seen signed guitars before. I've seen one-of-a-kind pieces that are considered memorabilia and those sometimes aren't even owned by the people who have put them on display. So I was just wondering if that, if you knew if that was the case or not.
In terms of the ownership of the memorabilia within the interior, I'm not, staff are not clear on who owns that. However, sorry, I don't...
Sorry, I've done too many agreements, probably just looking at who owns what and over time. So another question that I have is, is this, is this something that would be outside of our policy? Would this be something that, that the applicant was expecting from incoming here today? Did they tick all the policy boxes otherwise? Because that's what I read in the report. Is that correct?
In terms of the application meeting city policy, they do?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely, they do.
That's why staff's recommending it. And last question is, this is a locally owned, small business that has long history in Vancouver and they are the applicant. So this is what they want. Is that, is that fair to say?
I would say that is fair to say.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Hardwick.
I don't think anybody is considering not moving forward with this, but try and come at it a different way, because I think, putting aside ownership of memorabilia and all the kind of minutia here, I think what, there's two parts to it. One is the loss of musical space, which is treasured in the neighborhood, and two is the memory and the historical stuff, which could probably be handled with a plaque or something like that, that's not too complicated, that acknowledges the, you know, that this has been an important part of the community for decades. So could we unpack that a little bit? That, you know, I can't see why there would be any problem with having a plaque or some acknowledgement. I think the issue around here is about the prescribed use of a musical venue. Do you see, can you elaborate or give us any further thoughts on how these items might be handled?
So in terms of introducing a plaque or something to commemorate the memory that's been over decades and decades here, I think that that's something we can probably work through in the development permit stage. I'll look to my colleagues here just for confirmation. But in terms of the second question...
Well, that's about the use. So it sounds like they want it, it's going to be a pub no matter what, but, you know, but it's, it's outside of our purview to specify that it be used for music purposes. Is that correct?
Actually, under the zoning and development bylaw, this application is coming in to propose a restaurant. And under restaurants, you can obtain, one can apply to obtain a business license to, for a restaurant, and that would in and of itself allow a music venue, including live music or a DJ. So that business license, should one in the future wish to come in, would allow music venues to retain on this site.
Okay, so long and short of it is, nothing that we can do at the rezoning stage, it would be further down the road.
Well, we've secured the land use of commercial restaurant space, so that's certainly something that will enable this to further come back as, for a license.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Wade.
Yeah, it's good to hear that we're keeping that commercial space viable. The proposed zoning versus the stack recommendations based on the addendum, where do we see the addendum and how is that kind of introduced to council? So how do we know the difference between the two? Because most of it looks like it's already been introduced.
So I'll try to answer that question by pointing you to Appendix E. So staff received an original application, I believe it was last year, and since then we've worked with the applicant for, actually it was two years ago, we worked with the applicant to make some modifications to their application based on what we heard from Urban Design Panel as well. So you can see in Appendix E, we've highlighted the areas in which counsel is able to see the distinction between what came in originally and what came in as an addendum. And I would say that the addendum pieces are rather, they're not huge, they're rather minor, and that is not atypical of the process that we see with some large projects in which we work really closely with the applicant to further refine their building.
Is it possible in future addendums that we could get kind of a glossary or legend to understand some of the differentials? Because it is difficult going through that on what are the components. So when you look at some of them, I know the restaurant space and some of the colors, but there's no legends to really kind of define what's happened. How often do we go through a process like this, working with it, to create an addendum that would be brought forward to council for approval?
I would probably venture, I guess, that it's not uncommon, especially for projects that contain multiple uses and especially given some of the feedback that we get from the advisory groups. We do like to work closely with the applicants to make it to a point where we feel confident to bring it in front of council, and that does require amendments sometimes. So I don't think it's uncommon.
Okay, and has the staff been involved in the well certification that the building might be going through? And have we looked at some of those policies on incorporating them into our own on projects like this moving forward?
That certification process is probably left primarily up to the applicant through various stages of rezoning, or through stages of DP and enactment. So I've not been super involved in that from a rezoning perspective.
And the third one is, there was comments, I think we had a speaker here earlier, Nathan Dunovich, who talked about the personal disability advisory committee, and they had concerns about the elevator or the connection tunnel between the hospital and this location that was brought up. However, nothing in the report talks about any connection between here and the elevator. I think that would be towards this future Skytrain station. So in this project, there's no current proposal for any type of tunnel.
That's correct.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Counselor Kirby Young?
Thank you. I'd like to move the recommendations and then I'd like to separately propose an amendment that I've sent in.
Okay. Thank you. Then we need a securitor for the... Okay, thanks. And so we're going to move from the question queue over to the main queue, just so people are aware of that. So we have, so I've counse, so we have it moved and seconded. I have Counselor Dejanova on the list now. Yeah, you don't have, once it's moved and I move the queue, I'll just check here.
You can propose amendment after I speak.
You can propose amendment after I speak. You can still propose the amendment.
Right, so how this works, and we're just working it through the chairs, meaning is once I announce that we're moving to a different queue, that that queue is, the old queue, the question queue is cleared. There were a couple, like councillor Dejanova had her main on the queue, name on the queue. Happened to councillor, we'd had, we've had the same question before, then we move to the new queue, and then it's kind of the lack of the draw, whoever gets on, on there first. And so, well, yep, that's right. It doesn't hold your place.
All right, I was trying to do that respectfully and not move it with the recommendation. We'll wait to do that then.
Right, so we have councillor Dejanova on the, you have up to five minutes on the queue.
Can you reset my time, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, it's reset.
Thanks. There's no reason someone can't propose an amendment after I speak, but I'm going to speak to the application as I see it because I don't see any amendment currently that's, that's here. And I think that it's important to me to realize that staff went out, they did consultation. I've been searching through the policy report or the document that we received or referral, and there wasn't a noting of this from the public. So if we're saying that we're listening to the public and there's, there was no question of public consultation on this, at least I'm not questioning the public consultation, then I think that I have faith in the Fairview Pub being able to, if they are able to come back, being able to possibly do this. But I'd hate to see an unintended consequence, like a 13,000 square foot mansion, that comes from policy that unfortunately we're not upholding here. So that's my concern and that's why I'd be supporting the motion as is, because I'd be concerned that anything that tied a condition to this, that if financially that meant less seats in a restaurant, if that meant that there had to be a primary liquor license, if that, I'm not even sure. I'm gonna have lots of points of information if there is an amendment, which there has been, it's been hinted at. But I, I did want to second the motion, so that's why I was on. I haven't seconded amendment, although it's councillor Kirby Young's right to move forward with that. That being said, I do want to offer some remarks and say that I'm really happy to see something here that I hope that we will see come in due time in other places in our city, which is much-needed hotel space for families, for people who need it, for doctors who are coming into town, for, for, to make our city not only a better place, but to bring people together. And I think that that's really important. I think about people who are in the hospital and they're going through some of the toughest times of their lives and they can't be close to their families. Their families are staying in downtown hotels perhaps, maybe a short-term rental if they can find something nearby. So I was really impressed to see the hotel space that's offered here and also happy to see that it's a local business that has decided, they've been here, they know what they not only want to put forward as an applicant, but what I've heard is that they want to come back. I don't want to tie their hands if we have some provision that says you can't have live music in a restaurant without a secondary type of license or something like that, or that it limits their seats. And that's something that their pro forma is based on, that their financing is based on perhaps. And without that information, I, I just really want to support the application here because I'd hate to lose out on, you know, something that is needed and appreciated councillor Fry's comments on that especially, in looking at short-term hotel as in, not necessarily short-term rental, but for people who truly need it. And I think that when we look at VGH, the fact that people do have to cross a bridge, get into a taxi or now rideshare and cross the bridge and, and go home for the night, it would be nice if they could be across the street from their loved ones. So I see a lot of benefits here. I see the local business possibly still going back in. And I'm confident that the Fairview Pub will do what, what they hear from the community after this. I don't feel that I have to put a condition on that and possibly there be some unintended consequence come out of that. So I am supporting the project right now as is.
Thank you. Councillor Kirby Young?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have proposed amendment, which I did send in a while back to everybody, and council has that. And I'll ask the clerk, can bring it up on screen, and I'll read it and then just speak to it briefly. And it reads further that staff continue to work with the applicant to determine the potential to support live music performances on the site prior to enactment, so as not to incur a loss of music performance space in the city of Vancouver. And in speaking to that, this is an encouragement. It is not a condition being placed on the applicant, which I was very careful to ensure in the crafting of this language. And, and I have run this by staff and I appreciate their feedback that it certainly is not prescriptive as a mandatory requirement. It's just an indication of a desire from council to continue those conversations and see if it's possible to retain that benefit that the community so much enjoys in that space. And so I don't think from that perspective it's punitive. It merely sends a signal in a direction very different than, for example, we had earlier where we're imposing conditions on Luton Lemon that were far more prescriptive. And so that is the amendment.
Okay, just before we move to calling for a seconder, I just wanted, just to get clear in my mind, what you're kind of proposing here is that if, if this passes today, that means the rezoning's occurred. However, we enacted through a bylaw in a, in a week or two, something like that. So you're saying in that, during that period of time before, if it passes this evening and when we, when we vote on the bylaw enactment, that is when the consultation would take place? Is that your proposal?
The, yeah, the continued discussion between staff and the applicant.
Right, and then we would hear that back when the, or it would be included in an update when we, when the bylaw comes for our, for our vote for enactment. Is that kind of where we're at?
Correct.
Okay, that's good. Thanks very much. So I need a seconder for this. Councillor Hardwick? Okay, I'm on the amendment queue now. Councillor Hardwick, did you want to speak?
Well, I'm, I'm happy to, to second and to support this amendment. What we're talking here about is what we've been talking about, which is to determine the potential. It's not binding, but I, I think the applicant has heard loud and clear that this is what, what we'd like to explore. And so it's, it's just adding additional dimension to it. So on that basis, I'm happy to support.
Okay, thanks councillor Dejanova.
I just wanted to, to note that I do support live music and I think that it's important that we have space for that, but I see that more as a policy conversation than a conversation that needs to be had here. I also, unless I see us going out and telling restaurants to close down, that like, for instance, Nick's Spaghetti House, I would have really liked them to stay. It's great that another Italian restaurant moved into that space, but I didn't come to council with a motion to say I really want an Italian restaurant in that space. Because I think that we have to, we have to respect the fact that, that there is free choice and it's sad sometimes to lose things, but from that, new things come that we never would have had the opportunity experience. I am quite confident that the owners of the Fairview Pub know what is best for them. I'm not a restaurant owner. Enjoy live music, started to read music at age three and played the violin, but I can't support this for the principle that I see us kind of going on a mentality at public hearing that, you know, we put, we put things through, you know, death, through a thousand amendments is what I call it. So for that reason, I won't be supporting this. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Carr.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Mayor, through you, I have a point of information.
Okay.
My question is whether staff are reading this, the wording of this amendment in the way that you interpreted it or not. My, my worries are on the words "prior to enactment." They come in an awkward spot. And if this could be done just as a matter of grammatical change, not necessarily an amendment, I really believe that those words, if I understand it correctly, should come after the word applicant. So further that staff continue to work with the applicant prior to enactment to determine the potential to support. Because it reads right now as if only the musical performances are going to stay there till enactment. I, I think it's unconfu, it is confusing. My question to staff, is it, is it clear or should there just be a change in those words to, to rectifying any potential confusion?
Yes, I had the, the same questions and we've been having, been texting back and forth, so, so would I ask councillor Kirby Young if that's your intention? That's what we've had back, but perhaps staff would like to just confirm that?
Well, we're just consent, conferring with legal also. I, I don't know that you would see it at form of enactment, but typically, at enactment, but typically we bring form of development at, at the same time. We could certainly highlight it as this form of development. Those two things typically marry up. Form of development come before enactment, so that we could clarify the language somewhat or even remove the, the kind of timeframe there. We clearly understand your intent and when we do bring it back at form of development, we can answer your questions at that time.
And what do you mean form of development? That is the bylaw. That's when we vote on the bylaw?
Yes, sir.
Okay, sort of. So, so basically the intention is, let's, you know, if this passes this evening, which is sounding pretty good, it passes, there's a discussion, and then we would hear a bit of feedback before the bylaw is, is voted on. And that's, that sounds correct. So, so can we leave the language the way it is to, to make that happen or would you suggest that we, that amendment is in order? I'm just getting clarif, it's still on this point of information from councillor Carr. I guess the, the question again to follow on would be, would you interpret it in that way? Yes or no? And if no, then we would have to propose, someone perhaps would have proposed an amendment.
It might be better if we left out prior to enactment.
Okay. Okay, so that's a point of information.
We clearly understand the council's intent and I'm sure the applicant understands.
You said, tell me the, the number that you're calling on the point of order. Councillor Carr, you still have the floor? Do you have the...
Yes, I'm just trying to...
What's the, what's this section? Point of order and what section is it?
I'm sorry, but am I the only one required to state this section? Because councillor Swanson has called them and has never been asked. So I, I'm asking if this is in order.
And...
Is this amendment in order?
I'll have to get back to you, just one second.
Thank you. You can try again then, Sarah.
Okay, this is a new one. So this is in order, but the, the questions that I was asking or the guidance I was providing was partially incorrect. We can direct staff to discuss with the applicant about the, the possibility of, you know, retaining or putting in a new live music performance. However, we can't get any information back on that to influence our decision during the, the next phase of this process, which would be enacting the, the bylaw. Because that would be additional information that would fall outside of this public hearing. So we can ask for staff to, to talk with the applicant as, as they go through and they're, and, and it's moving towards bylaw, but we can't have any actual information, any additional information to make that decision. So it is in order. Councillor Carr, and thanks everybody for letting me work through that one. You still have the floor.
Amendment, to this amendment, which is to strike the words "prior to enactment." And I don't think I need to speak to it, I think...
So I'm gonna move us to, I'm gonna move us over to the amendment, to the amendment queue, just following. Okay, so we have a seconder. If anybody else wants to speak to this, we need to put you out, you need to put yourself on the list. I don't, oh, councillor Dejanova?
I'm just voting against this in principle because I'm going to vote against the main amendment because I think it's unnecessary and could cause harm to the possible use at the end of the day if the Fairview Pub couldn't or somehow interpreted this differently or their funders interpreted this. I'm not sure what their financial model is. I can't ask right now. We're in public hearing. I understand this can also be addressed at business license later on, so for that reason I will not be supporting it.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. And I don't see anybody else on the queue, so I will call a vote on this amendment to the amendment. Councillor Weeb and councillor, yeah, just councillor, councillor Weeb. Okay, oh councillor Weeb, still need you to vote. Oh, it's not working? Vote assist. That looks like it's passed with councillor Dejanova in opposition. Okay, so now I'm going back to the amendment queue. Councillor Carr, you still have the floor?
Oh, well, yes, I do, and I support the amendment.
Okay, thank you.
As amended.
Okay, and that's it for the speakers' queue, so I can call for a vote on this amendment That's passed with councillor Dejanova in opposition. Now I'm going back to the main queue. Councillor Kirby Young, you still have the floor?
Yeah, I'll speak to the main motion now if I, if I can do that. I'm really happy to see this project come forward. Most people know that my background's in the tourism and hospitality industry and I'm particularly sensitive to the shortage of hotel rooms that we have in the city and the economic impact. And I appreciate the fact that we had a speaker from Tourism Vancouver who really clearly articulated that. We have had a net loss of hotel rooms over the past couple of decades and particularly in the last five, six, seven years. And I think the industry is really feeling it and that limits economic opportunities in terms of spending in the city. And when tourists come in, they don't just spend on the hotel, they spend in the local stores and they spend in the restaurants, but it's also employment, 70,000 jobs in the city of Vancouver. And this represents almost a fourfold increase in hotel rooms, moving from 117, I believe it is, up to the, where's my number here? Up to the 437 hotel units. And it's a great, I think, breakdown between general purpose hotel rooms for transient stay, whether it's leisure and convention visitors with a convention space, as well as longer-term stays for families that need to be close to their loved ones who are at VGH. I also appreciate too, because we hear a lot of talk around the bike lanes that were put in in front of VGH and the trouble in accessing the area there and sort of constraints on parking. So while normally it would seem counterintuitive to have this many parking spots in a development like this, this is going to be right near the new subway station, which is very exciting to see that continuing, I do think that there is a, a real need there, particularly because of the hospital constraints. I'm glad that sort of the flight path considerations have been taken into account. And so that's a great thing. We need the hotel rooms. It's a great economic story. And it's also nice that it'll be a mid-range targeted hotel brand, providing sort of more relatively, I say relatively, more accessible hotel rates rather than some of the higher-end properties that are the only ones that have been coming in. Having said that, I really do appreciate the role that the Fairview Pub and the live music venue has played in sort of the social and the gathering space for a diversity of people in the neighborhood and particularly our seniors community. I think it's important to clarify, my understanding is there's one new owner of this entire site. It's not like the Fairview Pub is separate or the hotel is separate or the other piece. It's all one ownership. So they're looking at that site as one, one collective piece and how they pull that together. It's not a question of is the pub coming back? It's going to be... It's going to be something different incorporated in the overall development on the new site. But I really appreciate the conversations that have happened so far, and I think it's important for council to signal when we're trying to maintain some of, trying to move forward with a greater good here, which is sort of the economic impact and badly needed hotel rooms to support our tourism sector, but also balancing that with trying to be sensitive to and minimize the loss of really valued community amenities like the gathering and the live music space. And we have a Music Vancouver Strategy. We have a commitment to try to not have a net loss of performance space, and if the applicant's already looking at that, then they can continue to further those conversations in a more meaningful way, and hopefully they'll have a, staff will have a good dialogue around that. I look forward to seeing what might come from that as well. So with all that said, I'm very happy to support the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Carr.
Yes, thanks very much. I too will be supporting this application. I really want to thank the applicant for coming forward, that this is incredibly important in the city of Vancouver, and staff for working with the applicant and continuing to work with the applicant around this project and to all the speakers who came. Incredibly important to hear from Tourism Vancouver and the need for the hotel spaces. And so this really fulfills a lot of, I think, important objectives within the city of Vancouver and not just around tourism, but, you know, very specifically, I'm happy to hear around the hotel, the kind of two different types of rooms, long-term stays as well as short-term stays. There are a lot of people who end up coming to Vancouver and having to stay long-term because someone in their family or in their friendship network is in the hospital, or they are in the hospital or undergoing certain treatments where, you know, a longer term stay is necessary. So I think that differentiation of rooms, I did ask, thank you for answering all the questions that I'd sent at the time of referral, by the way, you worked them all into the intro, that they'll all have kitchenettes in those longer term stay rooms. And I think that that's an incredibly important added service to the community that needs such rooms. And it's obvious that this is an ideal location, it's right by the hospital, it's right by the Skytrain station, and it's part of, it's really part of our longer term strategy to develop that area also with this kind of, these kinds of rooms, this kind of a service to the community and to the larger economy. A couple of things that people haven't talked about, I really like, it was said in the intro, really like the idea of exploring mass timber. I hope that comes to fruition because, and to note embodied carbon. These are things that we're all going to have to be paying much more attention to as we move forward in deeper and deeper moves to combat the climate emergency that we face. So I'd encourage that in the next while. And to pursuing wellness certification as well. So those are, I think, very solid moves.
Thank you, Counselor Frye.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Yes, I'll be supporting this with, and with the amendment as amended. It is obviously disappointing to lose the Fairview Pub, but I think we all realize that a pub of that size, one-story building with a surface parking lot on the roof on Broadway was on borrowed, living on borrowed time. And it does sort of highlight the need for us to be a little bit more proactive moving forward about how we can protect our cultural spaces. That being said, Vancouver General is the, I just looked it up, it's the second largest hospital in the country, just after Ottawa's hospital. So this is a significant healthcare site that does lack the needed amenities for people who are outpatient or people who are visiting loved ones in the hospital. So I think this is a necessary, a necessary building to include in the infrastructure here. But I do, I was a little disappointed to not hear a more assertive approach to accessibility, and I hope that the applicant could maybe work with our staff a little bit further on the development and ensure that we're not just meeting minimum accessibility, but we're really excelling with the accessibility, because this is a major hospital site. And I think that we'll probably look back and think, wow, why didn't we make it more accessible as we look forward in the future? I also want to highlight the comments from Mr. Donahue. I appreciate that from the slide, the flight path is, seems kind of close to the roof of the building. I don't know anything about flying a helicopter, but apparently he does. And it might be worth putting some lights or something that kind of indicates that, yes, it's there. And on that note, it is an incredibly attractive building, and I don't think we really gave enough lip service to the fact that it's a good-looking building and it's on a stretch of Broadway that could use a little bit of flavor. And so I do appreciate the thought that went into the architecture and, of course, the wellness gardens and the various components that are really going to make this a great asset for this part of our city on Broadway. So good job we'll be supporting.
Thank you, Counselor Domenado.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. And very briefly, because I think my colleagues have touched on a lot of key points, I think that one of the things that stands out for me, and it was touched on by Counselor Kirby Young, is we do know from the data from Tourism Vancouver that we do have a shortage of hotels and was meeting with representatives of Tourism Vancouver not that long ago, and that was a big topic of conversation, is the fact that we actually miss out on economic opportunities of people hosting conferences, events here in Vancouver because of that shortage. And so I see this as adding that value, is that we're having another place for people to stay, both short-term for conference venues, activities, but also possibly longer stays for family to maybe visiting loved ones at VGH. So I think that there's a huge value in that. I appreciate the comments from some of the speakers this evening who came and spoke about the value of the Fairview Pub and the live music venues. And so I appreciated the amendment from Counselor Kirby Young and exploring ways to potentially still retain something like that in the future building. And absolutely, it is a healthcare hub, but the whole Broadway corridor is an employment hub as well. I think we need to recognize that in the busiest corridor in North America as well, so it's on public transit. And so again, there's merit in this in terms of having hotel space on this corridor and adjacent to the hospital. So I'm supportive of it, appreciate some of the public plaza sort of space that's going to be there as well. I'd love to see an opportunity to see if the landscaping on the top could be open to the public as well, not just to hotel users. I think that'd be an interesting opportunity. But I am supportive of the application. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Weeb.
Yeah, I echo the comments of Counselor Frye that I think there's an opportunity here to make it a very accessible building, recognizing the context of where it is and the needs in the community. I really appreciate the use of the Western Cedar and the comments in the report talking about its connections to the coast alish and the spiritual elements. The forest garden, the campfire, I mean, there's a lot of elements to this building that really stand out to really make sure that it's understanding of its place and is delivering on a lot of that. So I really look forward to seeing a building of this green, basically, structure and I think the wellness component of it as we try to build a city that's livable. I think so, the wellbeing component's really integral to the design, and I think it's been well implemented. So I will be supportive. And the Fairview Pub, I really do hope that we recognize different ways that the city can do, right, taxation components and finding ways to find those cultural significant and heritage components that we use for heritage density and heritage bonusing, if there's ways we can do that with culture. Because I think that we need to find new creative techniques to ensure that we have places that people can walk to at all times and places for people of all ages to dance. I will be supportive.
Thank you, Counselor DeGenova.
I just wanted to clarify that although I do not support the amendment, although it's amended in, I will be supporting the overall motion. I could go through the measures of asking us to have two votes. I won't do that. It was clear that I voted against the amendment, and I stated the reasons why. I want to thank the applicant for having such a successful run at live music that now it's a requirement for you. It's not something you're offering anymore, maybe. But again, I appreciate the wording, no longer ties it to enactment, and I look forward to seeing the immense benefit that will come from this project, looking at the hotel rooms, the benefit that will come to Vancouver General Hospital and surrounding areas, as well as the local businesses that I hope will stay. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Hardwick.
I too am supportive of this development overall and just be grateful for consideration of the music space. And to all our friends in the local music scene, stay tuned on this because I think they'll be watching carefully. Thank you.
Thank you. Just before I call for the vote, just like to say a few words. I played at the Fairview. Love that bar. Saw Brick House like a million times there, you know, family gatherings and the whole bit, so it's kind of sad to see it go. And you think of the town pump and other, all kinds of venues around that go, but then, you know, that's, but then I think we have one of the cities, one of the country's most preeminent architects designing well-needed hotel space right by the second largest hospital in the country. So I do like the attention that council's given to making sure, you know, trying to ensure as much as possible that there's a good fit with the neighborhood and that the folks who enjoyed live music there will have something of similar value to enjoy. Music has moved on a bit, though, since I was playing there, and so maybe modern, more modern amenities could be built into the new site to cater to the next generation of music listeners. So I think this is a great project, and thanks again to staff for all their work on this. I know these are, these are all kinds of tricky negotiations, and thanks for the information about the flight pass as well. I think I'm glad that staff's included that, but it's something for us to think about as the city continues to grow. So council, you know, good work tonight, and I will call the vote now on this, on That's passed unanimously. Thank you, council. And that's it for us this evening. If, I guess I can get a call for a motion to adjourn. Counselor Hardwick, Counselor DeGenova seconded. All in favor? Any opposed? That's passed. Thanks very much, council.